So, welcome to the December 1st, 2020 council meeting for the City of Eureka. Assistant City Manager Powell, can we start with a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Seaman.
Here.
Councilmember Castellano.
Here.
Councilmember Mezner.
Here.
Here.
Member Arroyo.
Here.
Councilmember Allison.
Allison.
Councilmember Bergel.
Here.
All right. And before we move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, because I'm not sure where to do the change of agenda, but we'd like to make a change to our agenda tonight and move up the Broadway Corridor discussion immediately following public comment period. There are some folks on the line that are consultants that we would like to be able to let go so they don't have to sit through the whole meeting. Do I need to get approval for that? Or just? You can see I'll go with that. All right. With that, then I will say, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the
America Republic, which stands one with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. And Mr. City Manager, do we have a report out from closed session?
No final actions to report from closed session, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. And so we are going to move on to the Mayor's announcements where we have one proclamation, which I have not on the Human Rights Awareness Month. Did we get somebody? Is there somebody here to accept this proclamation tonight?
Mayor, I didn't get a response. We did reach out, so if we could just read it into the record.
I will read it into the record, and if you are here from the Human Rights Commission or to accept this, just yeah, unmute yourself after I'm done and let us know. So, City of Eureka Proclamation in recognition of Human Rights Awareness Month, December 2020. Whereas the United Nations Assembly adopted the Universal Declaration of Human Rights in December 1948, and this marked the first attempt in human history to set down the minimum rights every person should enjoy. And whereas in 2020, public awareness and lack of civility has grown among groups of people and individuals in their ability to discuss without anger or fear topics of the day. And whereas our citizens strive to uphold and defend the rights of free speech. And whereas speech, whether free or inhibited, is now strained by intolerant adversaries and from a multitude of pressures, including but not limited to statements by family members, public officials on social media, and in schools. And whereas anger and hatred can go and challenged in our daily lives and in our schools, which leads to bullying and fear-provoking actions. And whereas the general public participates in retaliatory actions of hate and vile speech because they see no alternative. Yet recognize that ultimately hate speech, intolerant language, and bias and discrimination has led to actions which are physically violent, emotionally intimidating, and in some cases cause physical harm. Such transformation within our culture is now eroding and will continue to further erode the peace and tranquility our citizens expect and deserve, leading to a more violent community bringing harm to our citizens, young and old. Yet further recognized that while the citizens of Humboldt County represent a small, mostly rural population center within the framework of our country, we must all act in ways big and small to change the climate within our control. Therefore, be it resolved that in December 2020, individuals, groups of people, agencies, departments, elected officials, and public servants choose a different path, a path that acknowledges peace, harmony, and human rights for all. In doing so, we vow to engage hate at all levels possible during the year 2021. Human rights and freedom from fear must exist for all people, for they exist or they exist for no one. Now therefore, I, Mayor Susan Seaman, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, proclaim that in the service of this resolution, Human Rights Awareness Month will continue an effort throughout the coming year, the reflection to take place for continued efforts to educate the public and for a community effort to use kindness instead of hate regardless of personal perceptions and political views. Primary goals of our society in Humboldt County are to encourage all citizens to educate themselves about the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and to value the privileges and freedoms we enjoy in our diverse society. So, thank you very much for submitting this. To see, yay! And then, and it does not look like there's anybody here to receive it. So, I will move on to my my Mayor's Report and just mention a couple of things. One is that I do attend regular HCOG meetings, and I would like to say that in our last meeting, or we're going to be having a meeting coming up, a special one, to appoint a new executive director, because I see Marcella May is on this call. Marcella Clem, some people know her as, is retiring, so we're all going to miss her very much. I'm also serving on the Regional Transportation Plan Targets Ad-Hoc Committee to discuss what the targets are for that plan in the coming years. So that, those are some committee things I've been working on. The other thing I really want to share, I'm so excited. I just got these today. These are Plan and Play Journals, a family tool for families to talk to their kids about COVID. So, we have it in English and in Spanish. They are produced by First Buy Humboldt, but we'll be distributing them through the City of Eureka as well. And they'll be going to our Little Saplings Daycare Center to employ employees with children. And if anybody from the community would like one, just reach out to me and I'll make sure that you get a copy. It's got great activities to, things to talk to your kids about in terms of COVID and explaining the things that are happening, how to deal with some of the emotional stress that's going on, and really making a plan about what's, what would happen if somebody in your family gets sick, so that everybody's sort of prepared for it. I'm very happy and thankful to First Buy for getting that done. And the final thing I want to mention is the Eureka, the ECEA, which is a bargaining group for the City of Eureka employees, will be having a parade in the Truckers Parade, Truck in the Truckers Parade this year. It's going to be Eureka Champions Children. And on it, we are going to have a series of light decorations that have been designed by kids from our Little Saplings preschool. And I'm very excited. Our local artist, Robert Adams, is going to be designing those. We're going to have four of them up this year. So, look for that at the Truckers Parade. They are just stinking adorable. So, something happy to end with. And speaking of holiday decorations, I will move on now to our presentation and invite Christine Tyson up to talk about Home for the Holidays, which will be something we're doing new this, this year in Eureka.
Good afternoon. I'm just going to share my screen with you guys here. Can you guys see that okay?
Yeah.
All right. So, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm going to be introducing the City of Eureka Mayor's First Annual Holiday Decorating Contest. Staff is really excited about this, and we're really excited to share this with the community. Let me give you a little background on this. And the City of Eureka wants to bring joy and holiday cheer by presenting the Mayor's First Annual Home for the Holidays Decorating Contest. Mayor Seaman encourages the community to decorate their homes with holiday decor. With COVID-19 keeping us home for the holidays, grabbing some warm hot chocolate and driving around the City of Eureka, sightseeing the best of the best holiday decor is the perfect holiday tradition for you and your family this holiday season. Individuals who have gone above and beyond in decorating their homes in an exceptional and creative approach are going to be recognized for their hard work. And the top vote getter will receive the Mayor's Holiday Award and be recognized for their contribution for bringing holiday cheer to the community. So, let's go over a little bit about the rules and regulations. There's no cost to participate in this contest. We'd love for everyone that's decorated their house to participate. And we're also extending it to the Greater Eureka area, so you don't have to be within the city limits. You can also be in the Greater Eureka area. So, you know, Myrtle Avenue, Cutton, Pine Hill areas, anything outside of the city limits there on the Greater Eureka area, we welcome to participate. There's one entry per household. And addresses of all entered homes will be included on the Holiday Decorating Contest map that we'll be sharing with you guys at the end of the registration period. So, it'll be really easy to look up on that map and be able to drive around with your family and see all the beautiful decorated homes for the season. Let's see. Registration will start tomorrow, December 2nd, and all entries are going to be due by December 13th at 5:00 PM. And then the voting, the voting will begin December 14th, the very next day, and end on the 22nd of December. On the 23rd of December, Mayor Seaman will announce the winner. And decorations must all be visible from the street. And photos of homes will be displayed on social media sites for the city, websites, and newsletters and things like that. So, how do you participate? We're going to be launching this tomorrow morning. There'll be a registration form on our website. We've created a special Facebook page for this event. We're super excited to share it. Let's see. We're going to be sharing people's registration photos throughout the season, so people can see kind of what they're looking for. The deadline to enter is December 14th. And entry forms will be available tomorrow morning on our website. And then the voting. So, how, how do people vote for this? We'll be setting up a system that will be launching on December 14th, that you will be able to go in and vote for kind of your, your vote, your special top vote for who you think should be our holiday winner. And the Mayor will announce that on the 23rd to the public. And so, that is kind of our contest. It'll kick off tomorrow morning. And you can find registration information on our website, our monthly newsletter, and through social media. And we'll be sending a press release out in the morning, inviting all of Eureka and Greater Eureka to participate. And we hope you all join us for this exciting contest that we're launching tonight. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Okay, see if they have any questions. Now I can see. Okay, Councilmember Bergel and then Castellano.
Well, I just want to say, thanks so much, Christine and Mayor, for putting this together. It's super exciting. And I just wanted to clarify, so there will be a map of locations where everything is going to be, and we can find that on the website or on social media.
Yes, on December 14th, we'll be launching a Google map that will show all the registered homes that have registered and will kind of organize them so people can go from house to house and then organize fashion around town. And so, it'll be really easy for people to jump out on their cell phone and just drive around and look at all the homes.
This is awesome. So, are you going to use ranked choice voting? Had to throw that out there.
Councilmember Castellano.
I'm figuring, no, but I was just curious if businesses can enter as well, or is it residences only?
We are doing residents only for our contest in the, in the Eureka area.
Great.
So, this is specifically for residents.
Councilmember Arroyo.
I just wanted to ask, this is a not necessarily a question for you, Christine. I wanted to ask if the council would like to have a little, this council like to have a little challenge amongst us. Like to lay down the challenge invitation.
Well, here's, here is the question for Christine. Leslie lives in a business slash house. I think she should be allowed to have a house credit because she lives there. So, can we say, if you live in a business, it's all okay?
Do you want to add any clarification, Leslie?
I mean, it's also a residence, so I think.
Residence, yeah. Well, when you asked about a business, I was wondering if you were asking about yourself.
That I'm happy to compete.
Okay.
It'll be like the pirate contest. We will be.
And except for most, most of my decorations are inside, but we'll see what we could do about getting some outside. Council.
Thank you for bringing that part, Christine. I really love it. And I, it's a holiday tradition for me to bike around Eureka and look at all the beautiful lights. So, this will be even more fun this year.
Councilmember Bergel.
So, I'm just curious, on the list that you have, we, it'll just be addresses, not names, right?
Correct. It'll just be by address, but we will have that confirmation.
Thank you.
You know, there's another way too that you might want to think about, where you don't put an actual address, but you put kind of a block number, and then people don't have their addresses actually listed. It's, we can, it's not a whole big security thing, but I've done that with Lemonade Day before. Okay. Anything else?
The community is as excited as you guys are.
It's a, it's fun. It's going to, we have so, it's been a hard year. It's nice to have some things to look forward to, even if it's just shiny lights. All right.
Well, thank you.
We're ready to move on. Thank you so much. And now we are going to ask if we have any public comment. Assistant City Manager Powell.
And no, Mayor, we did not have a request for the general public comment tonight.
Excellent. In that case, we will move on to the Broadway Corridor discussion. And so, we have, I just saw Brad turn on his, there he is, Mr. Metam from Caltrans is here to do a presentation. And I believe it's Brian Gerving, Director Gerving, are you going to introduce him?
Well, just briefly, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll briefly introduce everybody from the project team who's on with us this evening. In addition to myself, we've got Jesse Willer, who's been leading the Broadway Corridor multiple, multimodal plan on the city's behalf, along with Brad Metam from Caltrans, Tom Fitzgerald from Caltrans, and Marcella May from HCOG. So, with that, I will hand it off to City Engineer Willer, who will give a brief update on what's been happening since the October 20th meeting, when this item last came before the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Council. Yeah, so in our last, let's see, not last meeting, a couple meetings ago, it was requested that we come back and Caltrans discuss a little bit more about timing, potential timing of bringing some short-term improvements in the Broadway Corridor. Back to this council meeting and what, what kind of timing those improvements might look like going forward and what those might look like. We had, let's see, we had presented some of those concepts at the meeting. And so, in the interim, since then, we've been, I believe we've met with Caltrans a number of times, as well as our team, and, and discussed some potential, we've met with emergency responders to gather some input for them on the short-term, short-term concepts. And we have had a lot of discussion and trying to narrow down and refine what could potentially go on out there. And a lot of that has to do with the state highway and some of the constraints that they have. And I, on that, I will allow Tom and Brad to speak to some of those things. But we have been certainly working in the last month or so to try to bring some solutions forward. And with that, I will turn it over to, it looks like Brad's unmuted, so I'm going to hope that Brad is ready to say something.
Thank you, Jesse, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The last time we were here, I, I asked for some time so I could bring the right people to the table. And I think I've done that this time. So, we've, we've had a lot of discussion over the last month or so, talking about the proposals that the city's put forward and working with first responders and our own folks to talk that through. I have with me tonight, Tom Fitzgerald. Tom is the Deputy District Director of Maintenance and Operations. So, all those folks with the orange shirts on there that work for Tom, as well as the people in the office trying to figure out what the right improvements are to be made. So, Tom, if you go ahead and go off mute, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, hopefully I'm off mute. Thank you, City Council. I, we've been talking a lot. We've had several meetings, some about improvements that the city had already kind of have on paper. We've talked about some overlap with projects that, that Caltrans is pushing for on the Broadway Corridor. I think that we, we had our last meeting as recently as today and talked about which portions and which features we think we can move the quickest on. And, and I think that maybe, I mean, we're talking about trying to use our quickest mechanism for project delivery, which is our minor program, to get something started. We think we've decided on one or two locations that we think are, should be the focus point of that, of the quickest moving delivery. And I think maybe we can just, Jesse, if you're able to put the, the visuals up for the Broadway Cinema location and pantry, I think those are the ones we were going to focus in on. So, I'll just keep talking about things that we've been discussing as Jesse's getting that going. But, you know, we, we learned about, well, the first time I saw the, I had the concepts that the city had been working on. And I know some of our team members had seen them earlier, but that was shortly after your last council meeting. And we looked at those. There are what, what we call operational concerns with, with some of the, some of the features that are in these rapid flashing beacon crossings or with pedestrian refuge. The concerns range from, well, operationally, these twiddles do function as the left-hand turn lane. So, there's operational access issues for some businesses that we need to take into account. Obviously, that's probably the lower end of the concern, because we can make other ways to get to everything. Maybe the number two concern is the fact that these, the twiddle, that's the two-way left turn lane. That's the center strap down most of Broadway. That is often used as an emergency or a, you know, emergency lane or, or a workaround lane when we have issues on Broadway, which are common, as you know. So, there were, those concerns, I'd say, are the number two operational kind of concern we need to, we need to tease out on each location. And then finally, there is the concern that these lanes are used for emergency responders to get through heavy traffic on Broadway on a regular basis. And that's what Jesse was referring to. We got, we did have a meeting with most of the emergency responders that would have concerns. And there were concerns voiced, I would say, in ranking of the, the most concerned might have been Eureka Fire, followed closely by CHP, less so by Eureka PD, because they, they know all the routes around town and the get-arounds that they utilize when Broadway does get congested, maybe more so than the others can, can do, like Eureka Fire obviously has less options in terms of snaking through town than a police cruiser. But there were concerns raised, and so we need to think about those issues, obviously. Some of the things that we talked about were concepts where the center island might be something that was traversable by emergency responders, but would still have the effect of having some lighting out there over that center lane, potentially with masked arms, potentially make the island a patterned, visible island that was slightly raised, but not so much so that, that a fire truck couldn't make it over somehow in the event that they need to use that as a, as an emergency way. So, those kind of things are what we were kicking around. But I think that the, the places where we can, where we have the most ability to, to work through those issues, and they would cause the least if they become issues for any of those things. I think that the location that we have, is this the Broadway Cinema location and the pantry location are, are probably the best or the candidates, those locations where we would have the least of those concerns. And so, those are the two that we sort of focused in on initiating a project to move the fastest on these, these locations. There's also, there, there's two other locations that are overlapping with a project that the, that Eureka, I mean, that our, that Caltrans is working to initiate on Broadway in our 2020 SHOP program. And that, that program, that project is looking more and more promising as we go for getting funding for it. So, I guess I just, we could stop there and answer any questions about that concept.
Yes. Am I good, Mayor?
Councilmember Arroyo.
Okay. I saw, so it looked like the, the, the Broadway Cinema location, like they're similar, but the Cinema location does, for lack of a better word, jut into the sidewalk versus the Village Pantry includes that bulbout because there's a little more right of way to work with. Is that, is that the main difference between the two?
I don't know if Jesse wants to answer that. I think that the answer is that that's, it's because this is already as narrow as the roadway can be pretty much to eat. So, narrow, crowding in with, with bulbouts at this location would literally be encroaching on lanes here. So, yeah, that, but you're on the right track. That's to narrow, that's to shorten the distance and also give the pedestrian a high profile when they step out and start to make their cross.
And are these pedestrian-activated flashing beacons, or are they the overhead, I forget what those are called, not the hawks, but the other thing?
This concept is for a rapid flashing beacon system with, and what we have on the screen is showing a raised island with actual light pole in the median and another push button in the, not in the median, but in the twiddle area. So, this would have a secondary push button. So, if somebody got to the center and was not going to make it across because traffic's not respecting the lights, then they, they would re-trigger the, the flashing beacon from their refuge in the twiddle area. And so, this does have a, an object in there that would prevent emergency vehicles or using it as, you know, a third, another lane in the event that we have a, a construction project or a accident in the area, which is common for fire to do. When they arrive on scene, they just sort of divert traffic around so they can, you know, keep traffic moving past the incident. But again, in the, in this location versus down there, once you get past wabashing into that corridor, this is probably the least likely to cause a big, a big operational concern for that, for that purpose. So, this location is, is the least of my kind of concern with having something in that twiddle. That's a, that's a real blockage. I think that as we move south on Broadway, we, we really should start thinking about being more creative with ideas that might be something that emergency vehicles could, could, could make it around or through. But we, we need to tease out those, those ideas.
Okay. Um, I have a couple more, like, just specific. Okay, um, I have a, a couple more, like, just specific. But I want to share the airtime, so I'll, I'll take a break for a minute.
Does anybody else have a question? Councilmember Bergel?
Thanks for bringing this information forward. I am curious though. So it seems like the locations you chose aren't necessarily where we're having the worst impacts. There's, you know, in between In-N-Out and say the bowling alley or, or the pantry even in that mid-area there. It seems that that's very, very dark and people are not seeing. And so I'm curious as to, I understand that you brought these forward because they seem to be the easiest to get done, but I'm curious if you've looked at that other location.
Yes, we've been, well, we've been looking at five locations in total with the city that the city came forward with and working with GHD came up with these, these concepts. We also have discussed in our, in our previous meetings with the city, the idea that corridor lighting in those dark sections, especially where you mentioned down towards the bowling alley and where the new KFC is going in. We feel like that's something that is, is, would be very beneficial given the types of accidents we've seen, which are, you know, dark pedestrians in those dark areas. So corridor lighting is something we highly recommend and think we should go forward with, you know, in conjunction with these ideas. And I would say that anywhere that is in those dark sections would be the targets for the, those, for those kind of improvements.
Okay, so I'm curious then, as far as prioritizing which locations, it seems that those, the location we were just discussing has the most, well, at least from what I've seen, it's very dark. There have been several deaths there and I'm curious, is that the way you prioritize? Or do you prioritize, how would, how would we get that done right away, is what I'm asking?
So cor- corridor lighting is not something that, that's, that's something that the city can ask and request from PG&E. PG&E puts in the, the poles and puts in that lighting. And that is something that is, is done at the city's request and at, at their urging. So that, and I do, we feel like that's a, a great thing we can do concurrent with, with this. If not before this or while this is in the works. So I agree with you that, that would be a top priority in my mind. And I say that because I feel like we, we've had, we have some experience, good and bad, with these kind of, these kind of features that we've put in these rapid flashing beacons. And part of it is, do the people use them? Will they go, will they, you know, stay channelized and, and get, use them? Or will they continue, you know, what, what we're seeing now at, at mid-block, not at signalized areas is the, is the diagonal walk with the, you know, roaming around out in the twiddle for a while, that kind of movement. And my concern is that we may get, you know, partial use of these. Some people, I think, will still do the latter and I think that that's the people that are really gonna be protected more by corridor lighting than by any kind of, you know, crossing features we might put in.
So have there been a lot of accidents at the Broadway Cinema location? Pedestrian or cyclists?
I don't believe so. And I don't think that these, well, I can say, I know that these, these locations weren't, they weren't flagged in like, we have certain tables that get flagged automatically when the accident concentrations occur. We don't have the, we're not working off that kind of data for the position of these. Jesse can correct me because he, they cited these, these locations primarily. I think these were done based on anecdotal kind of observations made by, by maybe city staff and, and also law enforcement. We did get some input on these locations from, you know, Sheriff Hansel and from Eureka PD. So I think these were based on sort of what's been observed and not what we have in, you know, hard accident data.
Okay, and Jesse, are you there?
Yeah, I, I'd be willing to talk.
Can I ask you a question though? So this whole business of corridor lighting, have we contacted PG&E about that ever? Or is that something we can do?
It is something, typically any of the streetlights in the city of Eureka, that's how they are, well, not any. Many of the streetlights in the city of Eureka are in place in that way where it's contracted with PG&E to have the light installed at the city's request and then the city picks up the bill for the ongoing electrical charge, monthly, monthly charge for the service. In this case with Broadway, I'm not sure if in the past we've requested to have lighting installed. Oftentimes, it's one of those gray areas where you have a, you have a Caltrans facility within your jurisdiction and, you know, you, you don't necessarily, all the lights that are at the intersections, I believe Caltrans would had put in with those intersections because that kind of fits there. It fits the model, the standard for what it is. And so the other places where there's dark areas, it isn't something we've been focused on. Sometimes it's like, okay, we have, there's all the streets and then there's, you know, Broadway Fourth and Fifth, which are essentially Caltrans rightway, Caltrans facility. So it's not always the first thing you think of is, you know, the city would be the one out there requesting and putting lights up on the facility. I think Tom's right though, at this point, that's typically been the, the practice as far as just putting lights up anywhere within the, the city outside the ones that we've actually paid for decorative lights, which you might be see different down in Old Town or in other places throughout the city.
So I guess my concern, I'm sorry, this is the last one. But my concern is that, that it is so very dark. And one of the reasons that I was interested in this presentation before is that, you know, three people have died. Three people have died in that location. And so I love this idea of bringing forward these new, you know, pedestrian, you know, things in the middle and crosswalks and all of that, but that doesn't get at the problem. That doesn't, at the, at the problem of the deaths. And so that's kind of why I'm bringing this forward in the way that I am. So.
Yeah, yeah. And I think the location to speak to the, the question, the first question you had is the why that, why the locations that are shown on the screen are the priority. That was more, that had to do for a number of reasons. And we did look at a number of sites throughout the corridor that were based on not only, yes, the accidents and those, you know, serious accidents and also the fatalities, but also at the locations where there was high pedestrian use. Because right now, outside of the signalized intersections, there are no places for pedestrians to get across the corridor. So we're looking at areas, not only where there were those been, you know, severe injuries that have come from collisions for pedestrians and bicycles, but also areas where we have, we have bus shelters and our bus stops like at, at the cinema here and also there at the, at the adjacent to where the, the Village Pantry in that area, just to the south of Wabash. There's also a, a, a bus stop there. And we know that at that location, there has been severe accidents there at that signalized intersection of Wabash or in that, and then also to the south. And so this one was kind of speaking to those specific collisions there and also trying to put it adjacent to, there's a number of things that go into play when you're choosing these locations, you know, and it has to do with like, where are people most likely to cross? There's a signalized intersection very close. You can't have it right where all the vehicles are gonna be queuing. You have to have it's a certain distance away. Or else it doesn't, it just doesn't work. It doesn't fit in there. So there's a lot of things at play. The other locations, I think the reason why they haven't been priority, and I think Tom or Brad can speak to this, is it kind of has to do with that emergency response and not having an answer as to having a raised pedestrian island in the middle of the highway or in the, in the roadway here at Broadway and allowing emergency vehicles to pass. And that question is, as Tom was mentioning earlier, we haven't, there hasn't been really a, a solution been found yet. So I, my, you know, my understanding is, you know, these ones are a little less gonna be impactful to emergency response. So it might be that they could be implemented quicker while working on some strategies for those ones that are down in the area you're referring to, around the bowling area that, that can, where the, the proposed Kentucky Fried Chicken is going in.
Thanks for the clarification. I have a follow-up about the, so Tom says that the lighting would be the city of Eureka calling PG&E. There's some gray area about, you know, who puts the lights. If we called PG&E to put lights up there and decided to prioritize doing that, would we get any pushback from Caltrans at all? I mean, what are those, what are the things that we would need to consider?
I certainly don't think you'd get pushback from us on, you, you're saying like, would we, would we get involved in where you want to put them? And say, no, certainly not, not, but we would probably offer, if, if they were gonna put in something that was, and these poles often are fixed objects. But, but PG&E kind of knows our standards and obviously so does the city engineering. So we'd be trying to put them someplace where, you know, they would, they would, the, the poles themselves would, would offer the, the illumination in the areas we need it and, and keep them, make them crash worthy or, or protect them so that they don't become, you know, a, a traffic hazard themselves. But other than that, no, certainly we support, we support the effort.
Nice. I hate when things get lost because of like these, you know, kind of weird bureaucratic things fall through the cracks. So I just wanted to clarify that. Councilmember Arroyo, did you have more questions?
I'm really appreciating this conversation about lighting and additional locations. And I, I was just sort of playing with different parameters on the TMS and like Switters tools, just which helps to map collisions and looking at kind of, I mean, this year has, this last year has had so many fatal and injury causing collisions. And so it's, and that's not really reflected in the, the data that I'm seeing yet. So I'm sure you all at Caltrans and, and city staff have, have that data more up to date. But, um, it just, I, I would really echo, I guess, these questions around the area between, basically between Wabash and Henderson. But particularly between West Hawthorne and, and Henderson, Henderson. Could you remind me what the intersection looks like at West Hawthorne now that we have the light there? There's a crossing on one side, right? I see Jesse nodding.
There you go. Sorry, mute. Um, yes, you're correct. There's a, there's a, there's a standard signalized crossing there for pedestrians. Push button crossing there, I believe. And so that, that is kind of your, your, your last crossing going to the south where you have an actual activated crossing. And so you get to the Vigo signal, the, the new Vigo signal. And there's a, there's a crossing there as well, though there are, there is no pedestrian facility on the, the east side there. So you can cross at Vigo and then I believe there's one at Henderson as well where you can cross. So there's a long stretch there and that's kind of why, I mean, that's one of the reasons that we've cited one in between there, just knowing not only from the collision data, but also it just makes sense. You have a huge distance between those two intersections. And that's a logical place to put a facility like this.
Yeah, I recently did my own walk audit by, of one person of that area and noticed the, I had not previously really noticed the pedestrian improvements in all their glory at Vigo, which I'm grateful that we did. I know that there was some concern about putting those in because it didn't go to a walking facility, but I think it was worth it. So I, yeah, I think my questions are like, can we focus on this area? And also, could there be pedestrian scale lighting that isn't necessarily decorative, but is present all the time for people who don't remember to push the button or don't choose not to, or whatever the case may be. If there could be like low-level pedestrian lighting and bulbouts and as much as possible to show that this is a feature that people need to pay attention to, that would, that would just be appealing to me. This is a really wide stretch of road though. I'm looking at it right now just in, in maps. And I remember when crossing it, it felt much wider than it feels in a car. And also the speed picks up in this section. So I think, I guess my other question is, could we consider lowering the speed limit in this stretch of 101? And how would one do that?
That's a tricky question. The speed survey for that location for the entire Broadway corridor through Eureka is, is really recent. I think we approved it in June or July of this year. It's, so it is current. And so I, you know, you're familiar with the, how that works, I assume, a little bit. Is that we, we do a survey and we, we assume that, you know, the 85th percentile represents a reasonable driver. And, and that's what it's set based on. That's what the speed is, is set on. So I, I guess that's, that's, that's the answer is the, the, we, we, we don't, it's those things. We can do them in five years, seven year, or 10 year, and this one's been just refreshed this year. So I think the idea on Broadway that we should probably consider is can we do things that make that traffic slow down with, in another way, other than signage, just to, just to sign it down. Things like traffic calming, I think things like features in the twiddle will have a narrowing effect. Certainly things like bulbouts tend to have a narrowing and, you know, an effect on, I mean, anytime you widen a corridor, you're gonna get speeds increasing. And then down on the, on the fastest end of Broadway, when we talk about down towards, you know, from Truesdale to the end of the Pearson area, that is also, that's in the Caltrans bike lane planning that we're trying to get approval for currently. That would add type four bike lanes to the shoulder areas of Broadway, which would also have a narrowing effect. There's plans for that to have some sort of, of barrier between traffic and the bike lane. Not a barrier, that's the wrong word, but some type of separation feature that has a vertical component. And I think that will also have that, an impact on, on slowing speeds on Broadway.
Okay, well, I definitely think this is going in the right direction, but I concur that the sort of Broadway Cinema area, it just, it might see, might be really feasible there, but I just have some concerns around that location. So I'd be interested to hear more about possibilities for this long straightaway of, of 101.
I think Councilmember Castellano has a question.
I was curious, you know, that area that Councilmember Arroyo and Councilmember Bergel mentioned between Henderson and West Hawthorne. Is the reason why that wasn't considered because of the needs for emergency services and personnel?
Not the sole reason. I think that the, in that section, so I mentioned earlier that there are, there are three concerns with these, these physical islands or refuges in the twiddle that Caltrans has. And two of those in that, in that corridor right through there that we're talking about are, are sort of need further, you know, study, in my opinion. First of all, that, that is the corridor where it becomes the most important for, sometimes for emergency responders to get through there. That we, when we talk to them, they were less concerned with things that were north of Wabash. And once you get down into that necked-in area where there's really not a lot of ways to get out of there and take an alternate route to get anywhere, that's when, that's the section that they were highly concerned about. And then also, as you know, since we've, we've, since we put in Vigo and, and Hawthorne, you know, we have not really seen traffic return that we kind of expect someday will. And so we have operational concerns with a PED button that would basically stop a platoon of traffic that just got released from the Vigo signal or from the, from the Hawthorne signal. And so I think that it needs to be studied. We don't want to put something out there that if it's used, that it, it crashes the system. So I think that that's another aspect of these, that, those locations that are to the, to the south that need some really modeling and, and decisions made on how they might function. The one idea about for emergency vehicle concerns might be solved if we can find a way, as we study how these might work, to have a lower-profile island that could be traversed by To have a lower profile island that could be traversed by a fired engine or by a, an emergency vehicle. And still serve the purpose of refuge. So I think that that's something that we can certainly keep looking at and we can start working on modeling every location. And I know that our minor program is such that if we decided we're going to put together a minor project and initiate a project. And we decided while we were developing it, that we wanted to switch the location, we can do that. So I would say that we're not locking into the location, those, these two necessarily, just by saying, well, we think we should go with a minor and try and fund to. There's question as to how many we can do. A minor has a very limited dollar amount. It cannot go over 300 and change, $1,000. So we have to, you know, once, once we start ironing out the details on these things and see what they cost. It's possible. I'm feeling pretty confident we could get two done, but I feel like we'd be on a razor's edge at two. And so I'm saying, you know, one to two in the first N1 minor program, project. And, and we, you know, that would depend on the features. This location here has a little less involved because of less concrete work, no bulb outs. But again, we're just, I think, I think the idea here is we start with these in mind. And if we decide that we really should shift the locations, we could, we can make that decision.
Councilmember Castellano and then Bergel. Oh, I see Brad. Did you want to say something to add to him?
I just wanted to let folks know that Richard Mullen, who's our deputy district director for project and program management, has joined the conversation. So if we get into project delivery and Richard's here to, to talk to that.
Okay.
Richard's cringing here and he say, we're going to switch locations too, but I think we can do it up to a certain point when we're locked in, but.
Just a quick follow-up question about the minor program. How like much time needs to pass before, you know, that those funds could be available again?
I can, this is Richard. I can go ahead and jump in. So the minor program is a yearly program for us. And, and there's two parts of it. There's a minor A and minor B. So the minor B is what we have more flexibility with. That's the project that Tom was referring to that goes up to right about 300,000. And that, like I said, is a fiscal year basis. So right now we're coming up to the midpoint of time where we need to get delivering quickly. We have our program set, but that doesn't mean we couldn't make an adjustment to get one of these in. We submit our plan for our minor program each year in the previous fiscal year. So we have projects right now. That being said, next year we could do one. It'd be something that I think as Tom's alluded to, it'd be a good approach. We could fit that into the minor program this year and then see how that goes. And we could possibly have another one then, depending on how that functions, we, we may learn from that and be able to add features or adjust accordingly. So, and that could, that would be in the following year. Now, there are other options. We have projects coming in, in the works through that segment, ADA projects that are proving sidewalks also that we could possibly make change orders to. I researched one project that's in the area and it doesn't quite come up to this one, which is unfortunate. Because we may have been able to incorporate that into that product that's going to have construction soon. But there is another one coming up in the future that possibly could add it in at that time. Those are the options that I see with funding these.
All right. Was that your question? Councilmember Castellano and now Councilmember Bergel.
So though I'm hearing what you're saying, I don't see, and I'm not convinced that Broadway cinema is necessarily a priority. I really have strong feelings about this area between In-N-Out or Henderson and Hawthorne. That's where we tend to lose people. That's where it's dark. That's where it's wide. That's where people drive fast. And I would like to see us start there. I, I, I'm not, I, I, and I understand that we're trying to look at all these different projects, but, but the priority seems to me that it would be, in this particular thing, it would be. People, safety. So I'm wondering, when, when can we start? Like, I love the idea of starting this lighting. I think that's going to be excellent, but when can we start moving forward with this? Some, some adjustments to the area where we're having all the problems?
Was that addressed to anybody in particular, Kim? I mean.
That was addressed to whoever would be willing to answer it.
I, I can apologize. I came in late here. I, so the lighting, depending on what's gone on. Tom may have talked about a day labor type thing. I'm not sure if that was mentioned about the, the, the lighting or what we could do under that, but.
I, I know. We talked about the light, the corridor lighting, Rich. And that's been a, the, what the city can, can ask PG&E to install a corridor lighting. So we've gone over that and I think there's, there's pretty good consensus that we should pursue the lighting in that dark area. But I think that what's being asked is should we, you know, as far as those, the five locations that have been identified for these upgrade, for these rapid flash and beacon crossings. Which ones we should concentrate on and, you know, they, these were, these were chosen in a way because they're, they're, they're less likelihood to have impacts on the concerns, the operational and emergency response concerns. But again, I think that if, if we can, if we can, as we move, kind of developing these, if we can come up with solutions, potentially amountable refuge island. With, you know, we do, we, we are experimenting with, with no touch signal ped heads already in Eureka. To, we did that as a response kind of to COVID. So we, we could have something that doesn't require maybe a, an in-ground sensor that doesn't require a vertical pole in the median. So, you know, if those kinds of solutions can be, can be found, then, and we can eliminate the, the concern with, with, or, or at least reduce the concern in that, in that north of Wabash corridor area. You know, potentially we just, we could decide that we, we can shift the, the locations that we want to start with, you know, based on, on the idea that, that maybe that's the, our highest pedestrian concern.
Councilmember.
Thanks.
Richard, do you have anything to add? I'm sorry.
Well, I, I just appreciate you getting me up to speed. I didn't know if we were just talking about lighting in that corridor versus this mid-street crossing. If it was a combination of the two or it was just lighting down there. So thanks for clarifying.
Councilmember Messner. No, can't hear you.
All right. I think my phone is going to work. It might create echoing unless you unmute me.
We're okay right now.
Okay. So I would actually agree with Councilmember Bergel that that is a really important place to do what we're talking about, not just lighting. Because that is such a high risk area and it is an area where people often try to cross. And again, the area where the cinema is, is not, doesn't seem to be as, as needed. Because there are lights kind of near there actually, or crosswalks kind of near there. I'm trying to think. Because the, the map in front of me doesn't have all of that listed. I feel like I've crossed there pretty easily in the past. I think there's one right below it and right above it, pretty close to that theater. So I think the other area is more of a concern and wondered if you might even consider just picking it up from there and moving it over to the area we're talking about. Like how feasible is that? Or is that just not possible? And you really are prioritizing some of the other, like the vehicles you were talking about with like fire trucks and stuff like that. So I know, I hear that that's an important place in regard to, to some of those vehicle issues. But again, talking about pedestrians and people, I think that's a really critical and really important thing to consider. So just wondering if you could address why that might not be feasible or if there's a reason that that wouldn't be feasible.
Well, I think it's, someone else? Oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna talk about ultimately whatever one gets chosen location. Now my head of the project delivery side comes into play of all the stakeholders that we haven't really reached out to. And I, the stakeholders that come to mind right now are the businesses. I, I, I don't know, making a left turns out of there, whether you couldn't, could or could not, depending on where that, that island would be, whether it's less swab or in, in those zones. And, and Tom mentioned the emergency and even the city of Eureka's resident on the timing. Since we haven't performed any modeling on the queuing that would possibly happen, if we can get everything in sync with all the signals, the slowdown that could happen. So those residents have not weighing in on hearing what possible delays they'd be up against. So those, those things, I just, I start going ahead and when we choose it without getting that, getting in there, hopefully whatever we do, we definitely need the city's help in getting that arranged. Cause you're definitely a key stakeholder as well as the business owners so that we're all in this together on, on this. So I just feel like there's a little bit of studying that's going to have to happen here. I don't think we can do that right now and answer it, but I definitely hear your concerns. We definitely want to be here to address the high incident areas. That just makes sense. Pedestrian safety is, is the highest priority and impact does. But I just want to make sure we're, we're all on the same page here about the, the large, there's other impacts too that will have to play into, play into this once it gets chosen.
Great. I really appreciate you answering that and that, that clears up some of my questions in my mind regarding it. So thank you.
Yeah. And I think that to kind of back up what Rich is saying, I, I, like I, I was mentioning earlier, I think that if we, if we were to discover, we had some solutions or we, we decide based on modeling or other, for other reasons that we're, we can, we can move forward with a different location safely. In, as a first, a first location, then I don't, there's no reason that, you know, we can't do that up to a certain point in project delivery, just make a change. I mean, if we, you know, we can, we can keep the, the, this, the initiation document open, wide open. So we can, we can make decisions on, on exact location of the crossings at, you know, at a later point in development. Miners are very forgiving that way. Maybe Jesse, can you, do you have the, the, I know you came with these ones because these were the ones we were going to talk about. But do you have the one down at the KFC or do you call that the bowling alley? As we do have that location on paper.
Yeah. If you allow me to just give me a second and I'll pull it up right now.
No, while he's doing that, if I may, I just wanted to note that the cinema location to the, to the north, the first signalized intersection is actually at Washington. And to the south, the first signalized intersection is actually at 14th. So it's a significant difference, you know, distance between them.
So there's the, this is the location. I'm not sure if this is the location you're, we're asking about, Tom. This is between Hawthorne and Vigo, probably a little bit closer to the bowling alley than to the Vigo end of things, generally speaking.
Yeah. I think this is the one though, that's the most, the closest to the locations that, that we're talking, the core, the dark area that we're, we're kind of talking about as being where the most recent collisions have occurred.
Yeah. And I think that's one thing as far as lighting's concerned, you know, that's, is certainly something. It's, as was mentioned, you request from PG&E, the city can do that. There is a cost that's, you know, I didn't really expand upon the cost enough there. You, you do have to pay for the installation of the, of the base, the conduit, the pole and the service. So that'd be a cost that the, the city would have to bear. We are trying to work with Caltrans and see if there might be some opportunity there to, to cost share on some of this lighting. So I think that'll be a discussion going forward, but it's, it's not insignificant cost, especially when you're looking at lighting this length of corridor. But I definitely, we, we definitely are all on the same page. It feel like lighting is something that needs to be looked at and included in this part of the corridor. And so we'll definitely flush that out and, and, and work towards, you know, it'll take to get some of the, some of it's installed and what the timing's like on that. I know generally speaking, with our dealings with PG&E, it can be quite a while once you put a request in to get something installed. So we'll, we'll start looking at that rather quickly.
All right. Do we have any other questions or are we, Councilmember Arroyo and then Bergel? And you're muted.
Thank you. I'm, I'm curious from a Caltrans and city staff perspective, you know, we're talking about this as sort of like short-term, immediate. You know, fixing an emergency situation is, is how I feel it's become kind of situation. And, and yet obviously there needs to be community input gathering and analysis. And I wonder what you think is realistic for a timeline and, and kind of some process next steps?
I, I've been thinking about that as I got in here and I, part of me would like to say that with these two locations, just to carry both of those. In our minor program. But have immediately have a public meeting with the, the, the businesses that are right next to it, adjacent to it. We usually don't go to that level when we have, in the minor program, but I think this, this warrants something like that. And I think we could host with the city and all the other agencies that would be a part of this. A meeting that would be a community outreach quickly and get their input. And that may help shape this crossing to go one way or another. I'm looking at the KFC. I like to see the plans and what the development is for that, where, where their driveways are and things like that. So they're going to have good input on these things. So that being said, I feel like I'm getting pinned down to a schedule here, but I could see getting a, a quick meeting together because this is urgent. I agree with the council member that said that. Sorry, I can't see you in my short screen here. But if we could hold a meeting in, say, early January. To get that thing moving forward, to put some kind of a public outreach meeting, then we can get some feedback and possibly go from there and regroup. But with the plans, I don't see this being hard to develop as far as a plan set by the end of the fiscal year, which would be before. The end of June. There's environmental, I, I'm assuming there's all the electrical works there. There's just some things we need to look at. But I feel like that's going pretty fast right there. Do you have anything else, Tom? Do you feel like that seems a reasonable timeframe?
Well, I think to get things kicked off, sure. I mean, and I do agree that with this, this, there's going to be a lot of stakeholders in this. And probably the best way to get them to the table is to, to do something like that, Rich. And in terms of, I mean, we, we, you know, it's not, it's not a complicated project to deliver. But I mean, if we're, if we're really talking about when we would be able to get a project. If the question was, when could we get a project out to contract and on the, in, into construction? If the question was, when could we get a project out to contract and on the in into construction? What would be your answer for that, Rich? Because from the delivery side?
I think late summer, mid late summer.
I was gonna say definitely that'd be a target and be a I'd be on a quick schedule too, but we we try to target the RTL so we could be building next summer for sure.
Thank you. That's really helpful and I appreciate the urgency that you're giving this and I have some other comments, but I realized I need to save my comments till the end.
Yep, it's not common time yet. Does anybody else have questions or? Okay, Councilmember Bergel.
So did you just take what was down at Broadway and and put it over this this road or is this diff? It looks different to me.
This is a yeah, each so Kim, each one of these, we have five locations that we actually put together a concept for that was individual to that location. In this case, we did take into consideration the the development of the KFC that's going on here in the top of the page and where their driveways are. All these sites, we went and met with the safety personnel with Caltrans and went and looked at these locations and talked about the different kind of it issues, but this so this is a specific one that was drawn up for this location. Like we mentioned before, trying to knowing that there have been those those accidents, those injuries and collisions that have occurred in this in this area.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other questions? And then I will ask, we have public comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we did have two people who have signed up and then I've noticed some others have joined us, but first we have Kelly Wehhausen, who has asked to speak.
Alrighty.
And if we could stop sharing the screen, that is sometimes helpful.
Kelly, you said Wehhausen? Are you there?
Okay, so then the next person is Colin Fisk.
Hey there, Mr. Fisk.
Hello, Mayor Seaman, council members. It's Colin Fisk with the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I wanted to first of all express my appreciation again to city staff and Caltrans for, you know, taking this seriously and you know, starting to to really get to work on near term and immediate type improvements. I I also I also appreciate the discussion that's being had about, you know, how to prioritize. You know, where we start making improvements. However, I think that, you know, Councilmember Arroyo accurately identified that this is this is a crisis situation. It's 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 an urgent need and, you know, adding two or even a few more mid block crossings, I don't think is going to fully address that crisis. So CRTP, along with several other organizations, did send a letter to the city and to Caltrans requesting that, you know, in the near term improvements that they look at not only these mid block crossings, but also a number of improvements to existing signalized intersections. You know, quick build techniques to add bike lanes and different segments of the corridor and some other improvements. And I really, I would encourage you to, you know, to look at at what we're suggesting there. I also want to emphasize a couple of other things which, you know, may seem more minor, but but can be very important, which is repairing some of the sidewalks so they're more usable by folks with disabilities. Restriping crosswalks, high vis- high visibility paint for crosswalks. More accessible pedestrian signals and redesigning some of those curb ramps, which may be what the folks at Caltrans are talking about with regard to the ADA program, but so that they don't lead people into the middle of an intersection. I want to emphasize also the lighting that's been discussed that is incredibly important and it's and it's really important also that it be as again, I believe Councilmember Arroyo mentioned that it be pedestrian scale because the vehicular scale lighting just it doesn't do that much for pedestrians, frankly, and for their visibility. With regard to the timeline, I think, you know, this discussion came out of the year long Broadway quarter planning process and that had a lot of public outreach. And I think a lot of the a lot of the sort of design concepts that we're talking about received a lot of public input through that process. I don't think we need to redo the public input process for the near term improvements necessarily. And I think that, you know, with all due respect to sort of the vehicular delays or other concerns about access, you know, people's lives, I think, need to be put first and we need to and we need to include everything we can to address the crisis.
We are. Your time is up. Thank you very much, Stu.
Do we have any others? I know one who has signed up, but I don't know if they would like to raise their hand, the members that have joined us.
I don't see anybody. Well, you have the ultimate.
I am not seeing anyone. Oh, Marcel, excuse me, Marcela May does have her hand up.
Oh, good.
Good evening, everyone. My, oh, there I am. I just wanted to remind everyone that the Office of Traffic Safety does a comparison with city sizes. So the city of Eureka is number one and two in pedestrian and bicyclists deaths for the same size cities. So out of 92 cities in the state of California, the city of Eureka is number one and two, and we need to change that. We need to be 92 in both. So I do appreciate Caltrans coming today. I want to thank the leadership from the city of Eureka on this project. The planning project that we have been going over for the first year really required us all to work together. And I think that that's very heartening. So it's good to hear tonight that we are going to continue these discussions and find quick solutions while we're doing our long term plan. But as Colin had said, the best we we just have to make changes and they have to happen fast. So that's it.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments? If not, I will bring it back to the council. We good? Okay, Councilmember Arroyo.
Well, I I just really want to express my appreciation for this coming together quickly and for the cooperative approach. I agree that we need to try all of these tools and also including improvements to existing signalized intersections where those are warranted. Obviously, like other council members have said, you know, my my biggest concerns are really in that area between turn and Vigo where there's just, there's just very little for pedestrians. But I also want to note that I really support the the tree location, even though that's close to an intersection with the crossing facilities. It is also the location of several pedestrian collision, pedestrian involved collisions. And I think that that makes sense as a location as well. And I don't want to necessarily throw out the Broadway cinema location. And I appreciate Mr. Medam, your comment about it being about a halfway point between two signalized intersections. And so, you know, a part of it is also getting people to see these mid block crossings as present and relevant. So I think honestly, if there are more of them, I don't think it will hurt. Perhaps driver behavior will be a problem. And I think, Mr. Mullin, you indicated that, you know, you'd really want to kind of understand that and that that's a consideration as well. I forget that not everyone breaks for pedestrians, for example. And so, you know, that's a component too, but I really just want to express appreciation for this whole conversation. Being focused around treating people with respect and recognizing the importance of everyone who's walking, biking or driving in that corridor. I often hear a very troubling narrative about how people somehow deserve their fate if they used the wrong, you know, process for crossing the street or whatever the case may be. And I don't want to perpetuate that at all with this project. And so I appreciate that that hasn't come into the picture at all. The 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 concept of fault isn't, I think, what we need to be looking at here because obviously people are crossing in those locations over and over and over and over again. And so looking at that as just the problem that needs to be addressed is and and having a safe option for folks is is really appreciated. So I just want to reiterate my support for the ideas that have come up tonight, the Mountable Islands, the you know, streetlights, but also pedestrian scale lights. Mid block crossings with pedestrian activated flashing beacons, you know, the bulb outs and the brick look kind of aprons that I think are eye catching and let people know something's going on there. Like I said, improvements at signalized intersections. I think we haven't talked so much about that tonight, but that would be just sort of low hanging fruit. And then I like the concept of bike lanes as well, particularly where there's the right of way for it. There's some sections that look quite wide and it seems like there's a lot to work with there. So I'd be interested to see if any ideas could be brought forward with, you know, kind of basically paint and pavement treatments. And then I, we didn't talk about yet the idea of like those flexible reflective bollards, but if if those are an option, particularly for some of those stretches where it's quite dark and the shoulder is really where people walk or those, you know, the mountable islands or pedestrian refuges that are in the middle. I, you know, I know that some of those can be driven over. And so if if those are on the table, I'd certainly like to see those considered as well. So thank you very much. And I look forward to working together more and I'm excited to hear that some possibilities might be on the table within the next year. That's pretty, pretty awesome. So thanks.
Thank you. Next, any other council member Bergel?
So I too, I'll echo and thank you for bringing this forward so rapidly and quickly. I frankly, I was a bit surprised at the locations chosen, considering that this one particular location has been the big area that there's been problems. Not that there haven't been problems all along the corridor, but for me, that is a number one priority between Vigo and Hawthorne. It's so dark down there and there's just so many problems down there. So I guess what I want to say is that I don't think, I appreciate all the work that's been done and I don't think we need to throw any of it out. I think it's important work that's done and that we can implement them as time goes on. But I would say that if we had a choice between fixing, between Vigo and Hawthorne and the two locations that you've chosen, I would, I would prioritize the Hawthorne and Vigo location. I I too believe strongly that people's lives are important. And I hear that narrative too. It's funny. Well, that tweaker was in the middle of the road or that kind of thing. And regardless of your station in life, that's not that's not a reason to celebrate the death of somebody or to poke fun at it, if you will. It's just, it's really it's real low brow in my mind, but that's just my opinion, which I probably should have kept to myself. So I would like to see us move forward on the Vigo Hawthorne area. I want to see, I would love to see us move forward with the lighting as well as anything that we can do in the interim. And I too, I love the idea that it's, you know, potentially done by, you know, mid end of summer. These things always take so long and I just, I have concerns about how many people are going to pay the price because of that. But I am grateful that we are moving forward in a good direction. And you know, this has been a long time coming. We've we've been having these conversations for at least 13 years. Back when I was on the Transportation Safety Commission, we were having these conversations. And it's nice to hear that there's a willingness finally to move forward. So I appreciate all of you. And I look forward to working together as well. And I'm hopeful that we can bring something back on that location sooner than later. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And any other comments? Councilmember Castellano and then Councilmember Messner.
I just want to again echo my thanks to all involved. One thing I'm curious about is, and I just want to urge looking into if if we might qualify for some sort of pilot project or or something like that, because I do feel like sometimes it seems like we're trying to find the option that is within this, you know, the the set funding cap for for the minor B funding. And and what I'm what I'm hearing or gathering is that may not be ultimately the best solution or, you know, or we're limited within that range of funding. And so I would encourage you know, our colleagues at Caltrans and at the city to you know, especially given the high rate of deaths and collisions that we have, you know, this is an emergency situation and it's urgent. And I I do think that there could be other kinds of funding available that might allow us to to mitigate some of these other concerns that that have been brought forward. You know, and and again, from my perspective, you know, the the pedestrian safety and is a priority for sure.
Thank you very much. Any other closing thoughts? Councilmember Messner and then Arroyo.
Yeah, just wanting to reiterate, thank you for bringing this forward and working hard at it and making sure that we get some things done this next year. I agree too that if we can just keep pushing forward, as even Marcela May mentioned, the fact that we are pretty in dire need as well as this is quite urgent and has been a need for so long. So appreciate all the work that you guys have done and would love to just continue to see more work done in how to get more funding as Councilmember Castellano mentioned. What areas are there available, not just the funding that is that you're looking at right now and I'm really excited to get that done, but also who would like to see all of it done, you know, it would be great if all five locations could be done and taking care and actually addressed as well as lighting. There's just so many, many needs in that corridor. So appreciate what you're doing and we'll just keep working to to move forward on on all of this, all of especially the safety issues for pedestrians.
Thank you. And Councilmember Araya.
I was just thinking about the public outreach component and businesses and using the turn lane and where the, you know, refuge islands are and that kind of analysis and remembering that there was this study in 2014 or 2015 that was the cooperation between Caltrans and the city of Eureka that included some like landscaped medians and street trees and stuff like that. And there seemed to just be a lot of input there about where those could or could not go. Is that a doc? Can you remind me what that's called, that study?
That was what we called the Broadway feasibility study and it was finished up in that 2014, it had gone going on for about three or four years before that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I recall that. So I I don't know if I know a lot of the businesses have may have changed since then, so. But just hoping we can use some of that data as well. I'll look at that as again, too.
And Councilmember Arroyo, if I may, that was one of
And Councilmember Arroyo, if I may, that was one of the many documents that was referenced in the preparation of the current, the current plan. And a lot of the background documents like that, like other projects the city had worked on, were all taken into consideration by the project team.
Yeah, definitely. I, I assumed that you did a document review that was very thorough for the planning project, but just, I just specifically remember there being like very distinct locations where a, an interruption of the turn lane was or was not acceptable to businesses. So, anyway, thank you.
All right. So are we, do we have any other comments on this issue? Are we ready to, it's something that's really important to this council. So I'm not surprised that we had some lively conversation about it and, and agree with the other council members. Then I'm very happy that Caltrans is here. This collaborative discussion is really helpful and for, for us to be able to be involved in it with you, it is nice. So thank you for coming. And with that, we will move on to our public hearing, which is the next item on our agenda. That would be item A1. And, um, I forgot to ask who's going to be presenting this one, who's presenting the, is this going to be senior or a principal planner, Gatz?
Correct me.
That was my guess. Got a busy night tonight ahead of her. Hello, Principal Planner Gatz. Oh yeah, but your, your sound is pretty, it's pretty difficult to hear you. I don't know what to do about it though. Just try and maybe it'll kind of work itself out. No, it's got a like buzzy, fuzzy thing to it. It's a little bit early for a break, but you guys want to take like a three-minute break and we can let Principal Planner Gatz get in and out because, and then we can just kind of crank through? What do you guys think about that?
So, yeah, that, that works. And is it possible she could call in for the vocal at least? That's what I did. It helped a lot.
Calling in on the telephone so that it's not, and so let's do that. Let's take a three-minute break and come back and I'll see you guys in a minute and let you get set up.
Or ordinance. And this text amendment was part of the June 2020 zoning code update. It applies to the inland portion of the city and the version that staff is recommending applies only to residential zones. The residential portions of the city on the inland side include all of the areas in yellow, which is the residential low zone and the area here, which is R2 or residential medium and the area here, which is zoned R3, which is residential high. So the question comes up regarding trees. Should we regulate or not regulate the removal of trees? Currently, the answer is, we already do. We call them commercial trees and we, we regulate the ones in residential zones. So you might be asking what kinds of trees are included in the list of commercial trees? And so I'm going to go down that list for you. First, we have bishop pine and then we have Douglas fir, grand fir, incense cedar, Jeffrey pine, ponderosa pine, port orford cedar, red fir and redwood. And we also include Sitka spruce, sugar pine, western red cedar, western hemlock, western white pine and white fir. So currently, if you wanted to remove any of the 15 types of trees included in the list that I just went through and the tree has a diameter of three feet or more, measured at breast height, which is four and a half feet above the ground and you're in a residential zone district, then you'd need a tree removal permit from Development Services to remove that tree. Trees that are included in that list that are less than three feet in diameter can be removed without a permit. The current code says five commercial trees can be removed within a 10-year period. So as an example of how that might work, let's say today a property owner has a couple of trees that are listed on the commercial tree list and they're both over three feet in diameter. And he wants to build a house and these trees are in the way. He would have to get a tree removal permit to take them down to build his house. And then let's say a couple of years later, he wants to put up a swing set and there's a tree that's on the commercial list and it's four feet in diameter and it's in the way. He'd have to get a tree removal permit to take the tree down to install the swings. And after a couple more years, he's got a tree that is dropping limbs and the arborist says it's dying and it needs to come down. The tree is on the commercial list and it's more than three feet in diameter. So he would have to get a tree removal permit to take down the hazardous tree. Then he's got a tree that's on the commercial list and four feet in diameter and it shades that swing set that he put in a couple of years ago, so he wants to take it down. He has to get a tree removal permit to take down the shading tree. And with this tree, he's removed five trees in eight years. So let's jump forward to 10 years after he built his house. There's a tree that's gotten too tall and it's shading as solar panels and it needs to come down. Of course, it's a commercial tree and three feet in diameter. And in that case, he would have to get a use permit to take it down. So another example, on another property, if someone wanted to build an apartment building and they needed to remove six commercial trees with a diameter greater than three feet, they would not need a tree removal permit, but instead they would need a use permit. And again, these scenarios are under our current regulations. So why do we regulate those trees? Unfortunately, as the code is currently written, it doesn't say why we regulate tree removal or why the trees included in the list are considered commercial trees. Calfire actually has a much longer list of trees they deem to be commercial. And our code doesn't differentiate between merchantable and non-merchantable trees. So what are we trying to regulate? So in thinking about that, staff considered, what if we regulated the removal of trees in residential zone districts that gives rich its character and speak to our history? So staff is recommending the following changes to the tree removal ordinance. The current ordinance references commercial trees and the proposed ordinance regulates protected trees. The current ordinance defines a commercial tree as one of the 15 trees on that list that I just went over that has a diameter at breast height of three feet. The proposed ordinance defines a protected tree as the original 15 trees in the list plus the addition of six new tree types. Additionally, they have a diameter at breast height of two feet and both the additional trees and the diameter were recommended by Keep Your Eureka Beautiful. The tree types that Keep Your Eureka Beautiful recommended be added were the big leaf maple, the black cottonwood, California bay laurel, madrone, Monterey cypress and red alder. The current ordinance does not require a tree removal permit for any size tree species that's not on that list of 15 trees and any of the 15 commercial trees that are on the list but are less than three feet in diameter at breast height. The proposed ordinance allows by right removal, meaning that they don't need to have a tree removal permit of any size tree that's not on the list. The 21 protected trees that are on the list, if they're less than two feet in diameter at breast height, as well as any size protected tree that's in, within 15 feet of a proposed structure or in the footprint of the road and removal or reduction of the mass of a hazardous tree when certain city staff, in consultation with a registered professional forester or arborist, determine the tree is hazardous and presents an immediate danger or threat. So remember our property owner with the new house and the swings and the hazardous trees and solar shading? Under the proposed ordinance, he wouldn't need a tree removal permit to build his house. He wouldn't need a tree removal permit to remove the hazardous trees. And he wouldn't need a use permit or a tree removal permit to reduce the mass for solar shading. Likewise, our property owner who wanted to build an apartment building and needed a use permit to remove six commercial trees with a diameter greater than three feet because they were within the footprint of his new building, under the proposed ordinance, he doesn't need the use permit and he doesn't even need a tree removal permit since removing protected trees from building footprints are exempt. The current ordinance contains the limitation of removing the five trees in a 10-year period. The proposed ordinance maintains that same requirement except for hazardous trees are now exempt from the five trees in 10 years as are trees in building sites. So who can issue a tree permit? It's not specified in the current code, but the proposed ordinance names the Director of Development Services as the review authority for tree removal permits and the Planning Commission for Use Permits for Tree Removal. The current ordinance does not contain any findings and the proposed ordinance requires findings to support why the tree should be allowed to be removed. The current ordinance does not provide for any conditions of approval, but they are included in the proposed ordinance and they are just examples. The proposed ordinance also contains language pertaining to bird nesting season and may impact trees that are more than 150 feet tall. So the Planning Commission made a recommendation at their November meeting and that recommendation to the city council was to repeal the whole tree removal ordinances currently incorporated into the municipal code and replace it with language that requires any tree in any zone district that has a diameter of 36 inches, measured inside the bark at four and one-half feet above the ground, requires a permit for removal. And a hazardous tree over 36 inches in diameter does not require a permit, but does require a professional logger to supervise its removal. With that, staff continues to recommend, pardon me, amending the tree removal ordinance as shown in Attachment A in your staff report. And here's a recommended motion to introduce the ordinance. One written comment was received via email and I believe it was forwarded to you and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Castellano?
Just real quick. With the, the proposals that you're making, who can remove the trees? And, you know, I noticed, sorry, someone keeps trying to call me. I noticed the Planning Commission is recommending, you know, a professional logger. Do we have, you know, can anyone remove the trees under your proposal or are there requirements?
Technically, the language that was proposed by the Planning Commission doesn't require that a professional logger, logger actually remove the tree. It requires that he or she supervise the removal of the tree. In the ordinance that staff is recommending and has put forward, there is no limitation or requirement for who has to remove the tree.
All right. Any other questions? Councilmember Messner?
Yes, thank you very much for this very thorough and interesting presentation. I appreciate that. There were a lot of details and I think really important ones as well. I think back to a few years ago when there were, we were looking at the, it was Myrtle, Myrtle Avenue where the tree limbs or the tree roots were coming up and creating damage to sidewalks, which really actually created a lot of problems for pedestrians. And when we discussed that, it went through a huge process for the, for the landowner to even be able to do anything with those trees and to remove them. And I'm curious how or if this would address something like that in the future? Is this something that kind of mitigates those sorts of things from happening? Because it would be, it would be like a damage issue. Would roots be included in that?
So in that particular instance, it would not since that was in the coastal zone. But let's say that they were, and I think that they were eucalyptus trees that were the issue. Let's say however, that they're on the inland side of the city. They would not be regulated by this tree removal ordinance because they're not in the list of protected trees, so they could be removed on the inland side with, without any permits.
Okay. And it does include the root issue if roots were creating damage?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bregel?
So just quickly clarification, with the hazardous trees, if, I'm just curious who pays for that? So if the city deems it hazardous and it's on a private property, is it required for the homeowner or landowner to pay for that? Or is that something that the city looks at? Yeah. Who foots the bill? Principal Planner Gatz?
So obviously if the property owner is coming to the city and saying, I have a hazardous tree, here's my report from the registered professional forester or from an arborist, then the property owner is going to foot the bill for the removal of that tree. If however, there's a tree in our right-of-way, then Miles, correct me if I'm wrong, there may be an opportunity that we would pay for the removal of that tree because it was hazardous.
For our right, our right-of-way, that wouldn't be the case. It would be the underlying property owner. Most of our easements are just that easements. And so the property owner, the vast majority, I'm not saying all of them, but the vast majority of the underlying property owner owns. So let's say you're in a green belt and we have an easement for a paper street and that green belt behind you. If that ease, typically those easements, we just have the easement and the property owns to the middle of that easement. Each property owner owns to the middle of the easement. So that would still be on the property owner to remove that tree.
Just a point of clarification. So I guess what I was kind of getting at also is, say that there was a tree, like say, like in my neighborhood, there was this beautiful cork tree and it had, the sidewalk had gone up. And I'm wondering like if a lot of the neighbors had complained, would the city go to that person and say, sorry friends, your beautiful cork tree needs to come out and you need to pay for it? Is that how that works?
So the process for that is done through engineering. And what happens is, is let's say somebody trips and falls on that. We get notified of it. We go out and market and make sure that it's painted. And then we continue to work with the homeowner and tell them that, you know, this is a hazard. It's your responsibility. You need to manage that. There has been instances in the past where we didn't get response and have that addressed. And so we've gone out and taken care of the issue and then billed the property owner.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we send it to public comment? All right. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, Mayor, we just had written correspondence that was forwarded to the council.
Thank you very much. Then I will bring it back for. Oh, I don't think I used the language right. Do we have, the public hearing is now open and there was nobody to make a comment at the public hearing. So now I'm closing the public hearing and bringing it back for comments and a motion. Councilmember Messner?
Well, thank you. I appreciate all the work you guys have done to clarify these things. I don't know that it is necessary. I don't feel personally that it is necessary to include the requirement that was brought forward of a professional tree or professional logger. Is that what it was? I can't remember the exact language, but it seemed a little unnecessary to me. So I am just going to go with staff recommendation and make the motion to waive reading, read by title only, and introduce bill number 992-CS to approve the tree removal portion of the June 2020 zoning code update.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, now discussion. All right, then let's do a vote.
Councilmember Castellano?
I.
Councilmember Messner?
I.
Councilmember Royal?
I.
Councilmember Allison?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergel?
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. And our next item is consent calendar. So I have heard that we have interested in pulling items B2 and B4. And so do we have a motion? Does anybody want to pull anything else other than those two? All right, can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar with those items pulled?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you. A vote, please.
Councilmember Castellano?
I.
Councilmember Messner?
I.
Councilmember Royal?
I.
Councilmember Allison?
I.
Councilmember Bergel?
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right. So the first item that we pulled is item B2, which is the State Transportation Improvement Program Funds Acceptance. That is Director Gervin is going to do a brief report on that.
Madam Mayor, good evening, members of the council. So you likely remember for years now, we've been answering questions, why can't we do anything about 14th Street? Why can't we do anything about Highland Avenue? And the answer has always been the city's in line for STIP funding or State Transportation Improvement Program funding to rehabilitate those specific streets. And those funds can't be reallocated at the local level. If we pave those streets with some other funds, we lose out on the opportunity to use the state funding for it. Well, after over eight years of being on the list, having those funds de-allocated, reallocated, and all of that, we are thankfully finally set to receive them pending council's acceptance of the funding. So just as a reminder, the funds are for Highland Avenue in between Glenn and Broadway. They're really bad stretch through there that a lot of people are familiar with. Hawthorne Street, the portion that we did not do in front of the transportation, the, the, sorry, HWMA facility a couple of years ago, along with Felt Street right around the corner, the length of Costa Street from Wabash to Washington, and then 14th Street from Broadway to M. The city is planning on using additional local funds generated through Senate Bill 1 to extend the limits of that 14th Street paving from M Street to West. So the whole length of 14th from Broadway to West. And then probably, in all likelihood, Clark Street from Broadway to Costa as well, which is another source of frequent complaints. So this $1.3 million in STIP funding will be augmented by, as I said, SB1 funding and then a contribution from PG&E. Anyone who drives the 14th Street corridor has seen a lot of work going on the past several years and certainly very actively this year by PG&E and their contractors doing gas line replacement work. And rather than going back and patching all of those trenches to city standards according to the new trench provisions that the council enacted last year, they are instead contributing a dollar amount to our project that will allow us to extend the limits of the STIP paving beyond what we otherwise would have been able to. And the good news is that we just opened bids on this STIP paving project today. They looked very good, and we anticipate coming back to council at the next meeting with a request to award those funds. So that's the presentation. You've got the recommendation in front of you in the agenda summary, and feel free to just say that you move staff's recommendation if that's what you'd like to do.
Those are all truly deserving streets of a little TLC, that is for sure. Councilmember Bergel? You're muted?
Yes, I was. I want to thank you for bringing this forward with that report. And I just thought it was really important that the public knows that things are happening on our streets, and I think that that's critical. I did want to ask though, question, I did hear you say something about PG&E. I've been getting a lot of questions about PG&E and what their responsibility is in these streets that they've torn up. And I'm happy to hear that they have donated a dollar amount to work with 14th Street. I don't know if now is the time, but is, could you just speak to, I know we did something last year with PG&E, but is there, are they required to fix the streets that they do do the trenching in that are already in relatively good condition?
The streets that are in relatively good condition, those streets that, you know, those, as we're able to expand our paving with Senate Bill 1 money, with Measure H funding and all of that going forward, we will have more streets that fall into the category of moratorium streets under the, the street patching, the street paving ordinance that the council enacted. And in those streets, if anyone, a utility, including the city's utilities comes in and disturbs a portion of that street within a five-year period, or when it's still within a certain condition index, according to the PCI index, then there would be a requirement to pave the whole lane width for a good chunk of that roadway rather than just a patch. On those streets that are not moratorium streets, we did enact more stringent standards that require wider trench patches, something called a T-cut, which has a wider patch in the paving that's, that's wider than the trench itself. And that helps to stabilize it and improve the durability of it over time. So in the case of 14th Street, that's what PG&E would be required to do. If it weren't contributing a dollar amount to this project, they would be required to come back and do that T-cut, and you'd see larger patches there than you would have in the past. But this will be a much more effective use of their efforts and of their ratepayers dollars to just extend the limits of the paving that the city will already be doing. And in the interim, you know, the first half of 2021, let's say, we will see trench patches out there that will be, they'll be hot mix, they won't be cold patch like we see in temporary situations. But it definitely won't be the finished product that people will see after the project goes to construction next year.
Great, thank you. I get a lot of questions about PG&E and they're tearing up the roads. So thank you.
All right, Councilmember Messner?
Yeah, so thank you. I'm super excited about these roads getting done. They're very important, and it's probably one of the questions that as council members we receive often is about the roads in our community and how we're addressing them. And I know we were waiting for those SB1 funds as well as the STIP funds, so very exciting that this is happening. I do have a question in regard to what you just said about the moratorium streets versus the other streets. So as an example, I know Bay Street has a lot of T-cuts, what you just called, I think that's what they are, all the way down the entire street. And wondered if what we enacted would apply because there's so much of it on the street. There's such a large percentage now on that street. So is that one of the streets that, as an example, would that be a street that will eventually be paved by PG&E? Or like, how does that work?
Yeah, having not looked at it very closely through that lens recently, I would say probably not, just because in order for the patches to become contiguous one with one another, there has to be a relatively short distance between them. And typically, the PG&E patches, as they're potholing at each sewer lateral and that kind of thing when they're running gas line, don't end up being that close together. Bay Street, yeah, you're, you're right. It's in pretty poor condition. And that's not, not just because of any work that PG&E's been doing. There's also settlement that's due to the sewer line running down that street and just generally poor soils. In the past, that's the kind of street that because of relatively low traffic volumes and a high cost to rehabilitate it, that we couldn't have ever thought of allocating the city dollars to. The same is true. You know, we've talked numerous times about Second Street down in the area of X and Y, that vicinity. Another example of something that in the past we wouldn't have been able to rehabilitate because it would have taken our entire paving budget for one year to, just to do one block. As we move forward, we do hope that with the Measure H funding beginning to come in next fiscal year, that we will start looking at streets like that rather than just prioritizing the very highest volume streets because we know that they're a source of frustration for motorists, just like they are for us.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions? And I, Assistant City Manager Powell, we, we do take public comment on this part when we pull from a consent calendar?
Yes, we can, but I did not have anyone who requested to speak.
All right, thank you. So I'll bring it back for a motion or comments. Councilmember Bergel?
So I move, we adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Eureka authorizing the acceptance of STIP funds for project number RPSTPLE-5017, 041 and 042, and accept the award of the STIP funds and authorize the city engineer to execute any and all agreements for the funds.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. And let's, do we have any discussion on it? Councilmember Castellano has something to say?
Just, just very quickly, on behalf of the residents of Ward 1, I thank you for this, you know, if, there's a lot of folks who are going to be very excited to have these streets paved. So thank you for all of your work on this.
And with that, I believe we can take a vote.
Councilmember Castellano?
I.
Councilmember Messner?
I.
Councilmember Royal?
I.
Councilmember Allison?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergel?
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Awesome. That is just a very exciting project. The next item that we pulled is the City Manager at Will Employment Agreement, and City Attorney Black is going to speak to that.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This contract was negotiated with interim city manager Miles Slattery at the direction of council. The matter was taken up as a personnel item in closed session at a previous meeting, and I was directed to negotiate with Mr. Slattery to see if we could come to terms on an acceptable agreement. That did happen. The, the basis of this contract is the previous city manager agreement that was had with Greg Sparks and later Dean Lauder. There are a few specialized terms, but basically you could call this our standard city manager agreement. There was agreement on compensation, which was in the range of city manager compensation, somewhat toward the lower end, but consistent with compensation paid to Mr. Sparks and Mr. Lauder. The annual salary that we arrived at is 162,000. We now present this matter on an open session agenda for your open session discussion, if any, and public input, if any. But with that, I would recommend that you adopt this agreement.
All right. Do we have any questions on this item? Okay, see, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, Mayor, I did not receive a request from anyone to speak.
All right. So I'll bring it back for comments or a motion to approve. Councilmember Messner?
Um, so I actually received quite a bit of questions regarding this today. And there were a number of people just wondering about the process in regard to the timeline that had originally been laid out and why the timeline had changed in regard to our original timeline of February being when we would look at hiring another city manager. Also, just, I think there was a bit of frustration that was expressed that during the COVID, during COVID that, and that we would be doing a lot of changes in that and making changes. We've already done so many changes and, and moving up that timeline seemed like not very transparent because it was, happened very quickly without a lot of public involvement. So those were comments that I received from a number of people and wanted to make sure that that was brought forward tonight to the council. And if there's anyone else who, who received any of that, I, I'd be interested in hearing what your thoughts are as well.
I saw Councilmember Royal had her hand up.
Sure. Yes, I've also had a number of members of the public reach out to me in the last few days, especially the last day and a half. I think as folks who normally pay attention to city business, we're pretty focused on their holiday plans last week. I'm not surprised that people kind of got back into it and Monday morning rolled around, they looked at our agenda and were like, wait a minute, I didn't really know this was coming. I don't think it really like made the news or caught people's attention when Councilmember Allison brought up wanting to move this up by a few months. And so I think it was the first people had heard of, of this decision. And for, for what it's worth, a lot of people were pleased or had constructive and helpful comments. I didn't hear a lot of comments thinking that this was the wrong direction for the city, but really just wanting to be, for it to be transparent and clear and, and some concern that it was on the consent calendar. And so I just wanted to echo some of what Councilmember Messner said and just, I think people who have a lot of, pay a lot of attention to what the city's doing, we're all kind of thinking we were going to make this decision in February and incorporate all kind of thinking we were going to make this decision in February and incorporate the new council members into it. And I haven't had a chance to connect with the new incoming council members, but I know both of them have worked with Miles Slattery many times over the years. So it's not like they're unfamiliar with you as a person and your skills and, you know, how they've all worked with you before. So I don't think it's, I don't think our original plan of waiting till February was unreasonable to include them in the decision-making. But I also realize we are here now and have given some consensus around negotiating a contract. And so it's a, it's a difficult place to be in to get feedback that like, wait a minute, didn't feel like people got to have their input in this really important decision. And yet I also, you know, don't, I don't have any, any sense that this is the, the wrong direction to go in. It just feels like a surprise to people in our community.
Do you have, Councilmember Castellano?
I received similar calls and concerns, you know, and I do want to speak to the fact that, you know, Miles went through the, you know, hiring process. And so, you know, there have been, though maybe now that time has been quite a ways away, you know, that, that has been part of a public process, though it's now probably with everything that's happened this year, is somewhat dim in people's recollection. I do think that it would be really beneficial to, for some opportunities for the public to engage with, with Miles, you know, you know, whether, I don't know, whether it's like a virtual meet and greets or something like that, because it just seems like, I think, and especially with the timing with Thanksgiving, it's, it's felt like people have been kind of left, have felt left out, you know, and this, you know, and I do want to recognize the importance of this role for the city and, you know, and for the incoming council. I did get a chance to speak to one of the incoming members who, you know, had positive things to say about going forward, generally speaking. You know, and so, you know, I, I think it's, I don't feel too cautious in terms of, you know, that regard of like taking away someone else's, you know, an incoming person's opportunity that perhaps they didn't have to, you know, weigh in on this issue. But yeah, I, I'm just curious, maybe, maybe Miles, you can speak to like some ways you might engage with the public or how that could, how you could see that, that happening?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Castellano. You know, when I was first put into the interim position, I, I met with all of the local rotaries, I met with Realtors Association, I met with all the different groups, but not necessarily public in general. I'm more than willing to have conversations with any member of the public, as I'm sure council is aware. I'm very free with giving up my cellphone number and having conversations with any community members that have concerns, and I'm pretty responsive to that. So my cellphone number is 707-599-2053. And if there's any interest in talking to me about my visions for Eureka, or what I plan, how to lead the city of Eureka going forward, I'm more than willing to have those conversations. And if it needs to be more of a, a group Zoom, similar to this, I'm, I'm more than willing to do something like that.
All right. Do we have any other comments? Councilmember Bragel?
Well, I would just say too, that I have gotten a few calls about this. Mainly, the thing was the speed of, of the decision. But you know, one thing that I would like to suggest to our new, potentially new city manager, depending on the vote, is that you could do coffee with the city manager, much like the coffee with the cops, where maybe you just have a virtual meeting where people can come in and kind of, kind of hang out. And I too, I feel like, you know, I appreciate Councilmember Castellano bringing forward the fact that there was a public process a year ago. And I'm hopeful that we can just continue to engage and make connections with the community so that they feel like their voices are heard.
I just, I don't drink coffee, but we could call it water with Miles, because I do go to the hydration station often while I'm at the office.
Water with Miles.
All right. Well, do I have any other discussion? Councilmember Arroyo?
Honestly, I, I am certainly willing to proceed with our decision this evening. If it were not the timing that it is with regard to a new councilman, you know, I would have liked to stick to the original timing, only because I think that's what we, we told the public and what we had a shared understanding about. But I'm, I'm also really aware of Miles, your strengths and what you bring to the city, and, you know, how good an opportunity this is for all of us. My only real concern is about the process and about being fair to our community who want to have a voice in the process. And I think that some of the people who may have contacted us, but you know, it seems like a done deal because it's on the consent calendar. So in retrospect, I realized, you know, maybe it's just shouldn't have been on the consent calendar. And seems like it was just a routine item, because it doesn't feel like a routine item to, to select our next city manager who, you know, could work for us for decades and really steer the ship that is Eureka. And it's a really important role. And so I think, you know, in some ways, that's just a lesson learned for me that I could have voiced my preferences differently when we first got to talk about this. And I, if it were not for the fact that a new incoming council, and there's going to be a lot of change at the next, next meeting, and it would be sort of a, a peculiar time to have this topic on your very first council agenda, like this would be a difficult thing to talk, if it weren't for that, I would say let's defer it for one meeting, because I think it should be more publicly noticed that people have the opportunity to give input on this matter. But like I said, I think it would be a strange item to come in and, and make a decision on in some ways. And I recognize that Councilmember Allison really wanted this to be brought forward during your time on the council. So with all that said, I will move staff recommendation.
I'll second that. And my comment would just be that I've worked with a lot of administrators throughout the years, whether it be at my own workplace at the hospital, or at the city, or the JPAs I've represented for the city. And I recognize value and see good in people. And I, that's why I wanted sort of like, the last things to do was to plant like one more seed that I think Miles would do a good job for the city. I don't know, you know, going, paying five or six figures to pay consultants to find another national search would turn us up anything good at this time. I'm just reflecting on, on the results we got last time. And I think Miles, you know, we should hire from within. I truly believe people should climb the ladder and, because they, they are the ones who know the city the best, rather than a complete random who would take years to get to know the community the way Miles or other department heads have. So that's why, you know, I just sort of want to do this one last thing, because I think, think it would be a good thing for the city. So second the motion.
All right. Do we have any more discussion? Councilmember Messner?
Yeah, so I did, I see, hear all of it, and I think it's, and it's such an important decision that I do believe that the public should be a part of. And I know that they were a part of the process originally with the city manager position. And, and I personally have worked great with Miles and have appreciated him and the work that he does. And so I don't have pushback on him, but the process for the public, I think, is really important. I don't, when our chief of police was hired from within, I actually pushed for that to be a public process that happened and was very, that was very transparent. And I believe it could have felt like a slight, but I spoke to him personally and said, this will actually only make you stronger and people behind you in a greater way if this process happens and you become that person, because then the public will be behind you and support you. And that did actually happen. And I just have seen it happen so many times where there's a person who comes up from within but doesn't have that process. And then they're almost on an uphill battle against the public often, because there's a perception that it was pushed from within without any, and the word that came my direction from a couple different places was transparency. And, and so I just wanted to address that. And I, you know, no matter what happens tonight, I just, I feel like that's just a really important piece of something that this council has talked about a lot, that we want to, we want to make sure that we have transparency with the public. And we've talked about making sure that we encourage people to join these meetings and come and speak to us. And so it's just something that I think would even make that position stronger. I think it would actually support Miles in an even greater way, rather than having the background of people thinking that it got pushed through without their, without their ability to speak into it. So that being said, I'm gonna let you guys think about that, but that's part of why I just wanted to make sure that the public was hearing, their, their voice was being heard at this point. And I think when, when there was that idea that it was going to happen in February, that was why we had talked about that originally, was so that there could be some time for people to spend with Miles and then also be able to do the process in a way that was not just supportive for the city, not just supportive for the public, but also supportive for the city manager. Because I think it's a stronger position to come into when you have all of that support. So take it for what you will, but I think it would be a stronger position if the public felt like they had more input into the process and it wasn't pushed through as quickly.
Any other discussion? Go ahead, Kikin Leslie, or Councilmember Castellano.
Director Folger, I see that you've made an appearance. I'm just wondering if there's anything you can speak to in terms of, you know, process or anything like that, that could be useful?
Well, the word process did catch my ear. Therefore, I turned on my, my video, just in case anyone felt like asking me any questions. I can, I can speak to process and say that it's been consistent with the way that we hire not only city managers, but other line staff members. I'll remind, or maybe inform the council that it's standard for city hiring practices where we do a recruitment that can have a result in a eligible list that will last up to a year. And so if you'll recall, you know, a year ago, we established a list of eligible candidates for the position of city manager through a very robust, interactive process with the community, like none I've seen. It's very unusual how interactive this process was with community members, many meetings, lunches, you know. So I think if there was a concern about the process or how the community was engaged in it, I would refer them back to the beginning of that sort of recruitment. And then, speaking to consistency, again, this is something that's very standard with government recruitments, where an eligible list of candidates who have already gone through a public process, a public vetting, are now eligible for a position for a term of up to a year. And this is for all of our positions, from custodian up to management positions within the City of Eureka. I would say that in, in juxtaposing a city management sort of position with what is standard among many other people in service to the City of Eureka, this has been a very above-board process. And, and Miles would, and others who are on this list, of course, would remain eligible for consideration for the position that they were deemed to be eligible for when the process had concluded. And so if there's any further questions about that specifically, I'm happy to go into more detail.
So we still have a motion and a second in discussion, Council, or City Attorney Black?
Yeah, I must say, when I was tasked with negotiating this agreement, it didn't seem at all unusual to me, because not only was I aware of the background of the recruitment in which Mr. Slattery was a candidate, and I think ranked highly in that process, but also the fact that appointing someone to an interim position is frequently a kind of a super prolonged interview process, not only for the council, but also for the community. And I know that's, it happened to be very consistent with the way that I got hired as city attorney, because I was, or, or I got the interim position converted to permanent, if there is such a thing, city attorney, is that I performed as interim for a period of about five months. And then Mr. Sparks was tasked to negotiate an agreement with me and my firm. So it all seemed kind of fairly routine to me. And I, by the way, I was aware that the initial period of time of the interim appointment was toward the end of, or toward February of next year. It seemed to me that part of the reasoning behind that was that if there was going to be another recruitment, it would start right about now. You'd have to start it right about now. And I think the council can be credited with not wanting to jump into that with both feet, having just done one about a year ago. So anyway, that, those were the things that made it seem quite normal to me.
Thank you. So we still have a motion on, we still have a second. Any other discussion? Councilmember Bragel?
Well, I just wanted to thank Director Folger for that clarification. I think that's really important for the public to know. And I also appreciated what Attorney Black mentioned about, you know, generally when you're in an interim position, you're going to actually go for that, that further position. And, you know, in Miles's training period, in his interim period, he has done so much good for our city as far as morale and just projects. And I appreciate his willingness to always be available regardless of what he's doing. And I've, I've seen that with the public as well. And so I'm hopeful that that this fiscally responsible choice, because going through another recruitment would be a lot of money, it would be a lot of time, and it doesn't make a lot of sense, considering that we already have a good candidate that was highly regarded in the last process. So I'm really looking forward to moving forward in this, in this partnership, or what you will, and, and looking forward to lots of good things for our city. And if Director Slattery, or, well, he's still Director, interim city manager Slattery, works with the, the whole team of the city, the way that he did when he was Director of Parks and Rec, amazing things are going to continue to happen. So I just really appreciate all the great work that everybody has done on this. Thank you.
All right. I think that is the note to end on and ask for a vote on this item.
It looked like Councilmember Arroyo had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Nelly. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll be brief. I, I agree that it's, it's time to move on. I just, I just wanted to note that, you know, with respect to public feedback and input, you know, sure, there was the, you know, our own press release said that this interim position would last through February of, of 2021. And so I think it, again, it just took people aback that we were deciding this in this way. And you know, kind of amidst holiday stuff. But I wanted to share that, you know, Miles, you've asked us to provide regular feedback to you, and we will continue to have the opportunity to do that. And I really appreciate that mode of working and being open to feedback. And I have seen, when there are concerns, you be responsive to them in the time that you've been the interim city manager. And so I just want to encourage community members, if there are any concerns and you want to relay them to council or even staff, please do that, because the city manager and the council have a close relationship and work closely together. And that is something that I want to know. And I'm sure the rest of the council will always want to have those open lines of communication open, as well as working together with the city manager to make the role the best it can possibly be and serve the city. So I just wanted to say, you know, this isn't like the end of the input period. It's, it's an ongoing process and I hope people participate with, with us in that.
Thank you for that. All right. I think we're ready for the vote now.
Right. Councilmember Castellano?
Hi.
Councilmember Messner?
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Hi.
Councilmember Allison?
All right.
Councilmember Bragel?
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Right on. Well, once again, Miles, I get to congratulate you, but for the formal process, and I also have in front of me the oath of office, so that we could just get it all taken care of right now. How you feel about that?
That sounds great, and I really appreciate the support, and you won't be disappointed, any of you, I promise. Or the community.
So with this, please raise your hand.
Stand, right? Can you see me?
Yeah, you want to stand? Okay. If I stand, I won't be too tall, so I'm gonna sit.
Why back up?
All right. I'll do it. So I, Miles Slattery.
I, Miles Slattery.
He solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
All right, the sentences are really long. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California and the Charter of the City of Eureka.
And the Constitution of the State of California and the Charter of the City of Eureka.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter in the capacity of city manager for the city of Eureka.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter in the capacity of city manager for the city of Eureka.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you. Virtual hugs to all of you.
I know, I feel like I need to shake somebody's hand. I'll pat my dog.
You got a nice tie on, Miles. You're very nice, nice look there.
It was very nice. That, that is the hardest oath always to give because the sentences are long, so I break them up sometimes strangely.
I'm glad Assistant City Manager Powell gave me a copy because it would have been brutal.
I noticed that you had one and it made me feel a lot more confident. All right. Well, with that, I believe we are done with the consent calendar and we get to move on to Item C1 under ordinances or resolutions. So we are again going to invite Principal Planner Getz up to talk about Bill Number 990 CS, Title 10, Chapter 5, for emergency shelters and resolution amending the land use plan of local coastal program.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay still?
Perfect.
Great. So before you, this evening is the Emergency Shelter Local Coastal Program Amendment. It amends the implementation plan and the land use plan of the City of Eureka Local Coastal Program, and it applies in the coastal zone portion of the city. And the coastal zone is shown here with colored parcels. The Coastal Commission certified the amendments on October 13th, 2020 with modifications. And at your meeting on November 17th, you introduced an ordinance to adopt these modifications. And also included for your adoption tonight is a resolution to incorporate the modifications to the land use plan that were certified by the commission. Staff is recommending that you adopt the ordinance, accepting the modifications to the implementation plan, and also adopt a resolution to incorporate the modifications in the land use plan. And there is the very long motion for you for this evening, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Does anybody have any questions on this returning item? It looks like I don't see any. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, I have not received a request from anyone to speak.
All right, then I will bring it back to the council for comments or a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the amendment. Should, should I read the whole thing or is that good enough?
On ordinances, you do need to read the recommendation. I apologize.
No worries. Okay. I move the City Council waive reading, read by title only, and adopt Bill Number 990 dash CS, an ordinance of the City of Eureka amending Title 10, Chapter 5, Article 2.5 of the Implementation Plan of the Adopted and Certified Local Coastal Program pertaining to emergency shelters, and adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eureka approving an amendment to the land use plan portion of the adopted and certified City of Eureka Local Coastal Program for the Emergency Shelter LCP Amendment as modified by the California Coastal Commission.
And I will second that.
Thank you very much. Do we have any discussion on this item? Seeing none, I think we call for roll call vote.
Councilmember Castellano?
Hi.
Councilmember Messner?
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Hi.
Councilmember Allison?
Yes.
Councilmember Messner?
Didn't I say yes?
Oh, sorry, Councilmember. Oh, my gosh.
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right. So we will move on to the sister ordinance, Bill Number 991 CS, Implementation Plan Map and Land Use Plan of the Coastal, Local Coastal Program for the Crowley Site.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. This is the LCP amendment for the Crowley Site located on Hillficker Lane, just north of the wastewater treatment plant and south of Humboldt Bay Fire Training Facility. This aerial shot there shows you where we're talking about. On October 13th, 2020, the Coastal Commission certified the city's LCP amendment with modifications to create and add a mixed-use limited designation to the land use plan, as well as incorporating changes to the list of uses and limitations on those uses in the implementation plan. Staff recommends that you adopt the ordinance, accepting the modifications to the implementation plan, and also adopt a resolution to incorporate the modifications into the land use plan, both as certified by the Coastal Commission, and there is a recommended motion for you.
All right. Do we have any questions on this, this time? Seeing none, I will ask if we have any public comment on this item.
No, Mayor. No one has, you did receive written comments, but no one requested to speak.
Okay. I will bring it back then for comments or a motion. Councilmember Arroyo?
Um, I move that we waive reading, read by title only, and adopt Bill Number 991 Tax CS, an ordinance of the City of Eureka amending ordinance 94 Tax CS to amend the Implementation Plan Map, zoning map of the Adopted and Certified Local Coastal Program to cause parcel 019, Tac 271, Tac 004 to be zoned service commercial and to add a qualifying combining district designation and adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eureka approving an amendment to the land use plan portion of the adopted and certified City of Eureka Local Coastal Program for the Crowley Site LCP Amendment as modified by the California Coastal Commission. Did I actually have to read the whole thing? I did. Okay, just checking.
It was an ordinance. Do I have a second on this?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, I will ask for roll call vote.
Councilmember Castellano?
Hi.
Councilmember Messner?
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Hi.
Councilmember Allison?
Yes.
Councilmember Bragel?
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Now we will move on to our third ordinance, C3, Bill Number 989 CS, City Camping Ordinance. And this one is going to be presented by our city attorney, Robert Black.
Again, thank you, Mayor. This, or the ordinance before you is very similar to the one as introduced, but in the course of discussion of the bill that was introduced, there were some requested changes. First and foremost, the change in penalty for the ordinance from misdemeanor to an infraction. And second, referring in the ordinance itself to a diversion program and the interactive process that we discussed in which the, the city steps forward and tries to facilitate homeless people finding shelter and housing. There was discussion and emphasis on, by Legal Services for Northern California, emphasis on a case out of the city of Grants Pass. That's a very interesting case. It has some pretty significant distinctions between the conditions here in Eureka and the program here in Eureka versus what the city of Grants Pass was essentially over, had overturned in the course of its business. Among other things, the city of Grants Pass is larger than us and they have no shelter space that is not religiously conditioned, which we know that Martin versus Boise said was not, that, that effectively doesn't count as an available shelter space to anyone who's not wanting to adhere to those religious conditions. And I thought it would be interesting to hear from the city manager, if he would, about not only our existing, at least a rough estimation of our existing shelter spaces, and also what the city is laboring to do in terms of introducing more shelter and more very low income housing. And he and I talked about his making a really, just a quick entry on that point.
All right, you're up.
Miles, if you would, if you would discuss existing and pending shelter space in Eureka, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you, City Manager Black. Yes, for a pocket.
No, we picked somebody else for City Manager, Miles. Don't make.
Your media.
I believe Mayor Seaman called you City Manager earlier, so I may just follow that lead.
Did I say?
City Attorney Black. So yeah, we're very unique for a population of, you know, just under 30,000 as far as what we provide from a social services aspect, from a municipality, whether it's sea setting or uplift program. But beyond that, from a shelter space, we are doing much better than the average town, especially in California. Currently now, the rescue mission has over 100 beds available for the men's side. They have over 35 beds available for the women's side. The recently developed Bayview has over 50 beds available. Also, Betty's Blue Angel Village has, can serve up to 40 currently. And the new women and family shelters across the street that we assisted Betty in opening up can serve approximately 25 women and family members. This is significant, you know, compared to other areas. But what's also significant is, you know, we've, we've been working with these shelters for a long time. We've developed a shelter app so we can monitor the situation at these shelters and see what beds are available, not only for the purposes of our outreach programs, but also for the individuals that are, are looking for shelter. Since we've had it, you know, over the past, I think since 2017, we, 2016, after the Papal March eviction, we've had an agreement with St. Vincent de Paul in place for an emergency overflow shelter. An emergency overflow shelter, you know, pre-COVID times would allow 25 individuals to, to go in and utilize it, St. Benny's as a, as a shelter. Since then, the only time it gets triggered is, is when all of our shelter beds are full. That has not happened over the timeframe that we've had that emergency shelter in place. So on top of these existing things, we're, we're not stopping, we're still expanding, you know, based on what EPD had done as far as their surveys of the unsheltered individuals in the city of Eureka. We see that we're still a little bit short on shelter beds and we're not stopping there. We're continuing to do more. Recently, the Humboldt Inn, Humboldt Bay Inn at, on Fourth Street was purchased through a grant by Providence. That's going to provide another 40 beds that will be available. Teen Challenge, the old Teen Challenge, the Yurok Tribe bought that through the same great grant program. They're going to have approximately 15 more beds available. Both of these will be available by the end of the year. Another area that we're working on, obviously with tonight's actions by council, is Betty's trailers. That'll go down on the Hillficker Site. That'll provide another 40 beds available for individuals up to 45. And so we're not stopping there and, you know, we're, we're really doing a good job of making sure that we're in that position. I think that City Attorney Black also wanted to talk and for me to reference the, the restricted areas that are included in the, in the current ordinance that's being proposed tonight. Those areas that are on the map, those districts, as well as all of our park spaces and municipal golf course that are, are being considered restricted. That total acreage for that is 937 acres approximately. We had staff look into all the other public spaces that are available outside of those areas of the parks, the golf course, as well as those mapped areas. And there's an additional 1,336 acres of available public space. So based on those things, we still feel that there, for those people who aren't eligible for shelter, shelters are full, or those type of things, based on time, they can still have opportunities for places to take rest. I can follow up on Roberts, when Bob, excuse me, when the City Attorney Black is done, if you guys have any questions.
Okay. So thank you, Miles, for that. And thanks for bringing that information forward. Obviously, all kinds of decisions are subject to controversy. It may be, and I'm sure there are people whose position is one of fairly strong advocacy for people to be able to camp at any chosen location in the public sector. What I think we've tried to do here is strike a reasonable balance between areas of the city, public spaces within the city, where the public interest is strong in being able to use those spaces in an unobstructed way. And those obviously include our parks, our commercial zones, recreational trails, and a few other sensitive areas. But having left well over 1,000 acres available to camping by those in need and those who cannot and do not have access to shelter that is particularly available to them. And I think it's important to recognize that the ordinance requires for enforcement that a shelter space be available to that particular individual. a shelter space be available to that particular individual and effectively declined by them. We, we think that we've, we have struck a reasonable balance. There is one, there are a couple of areas that certainly bear further study. One of them is the fines that are attendant on an infraction and enforce, excuse me, a conviction of an infraction. And we probably need to look at those. The Grants Pass case is fairly clear that it's very possible to have an excessive fine, even in, even in a situation where enforcement is warranted. And so I think we need to, to look at that. I think we probably want to find ways, perhaps within this ordinance, to express more clearly what we intend to do as far as diversion and essentially providing social services and social assistance to those who are out there camping. But I don't believe that this ordinance has to be delayed in that process. And if the council wanted to strike a different approach on the issue of fines, we could do that tonight and blend that into the final version of the ordinance. We can also come back to you two or three months hence with essentially a further amendment or cleanup of this particular bill. So that's, that's the report. The recommended action, of course, is to adopt wave reading and to adopt this ordinance tonight.
All right, Councilmember Allison.
Yes, thank you. Could you speak about how an individual might be given an infraction or fine? Would it basically be along lines of an officer or city staff member approaches, individual says, hey, you can't camp here? The individual says no, or something along that lines, then an infraction is given? Is that how it would probably come down to?
Well, consider that to be the most absolutely shortened version of the interaction that you might come up with. My, I, I think that it would be, as I said previously, a much more interactive approach in which the person, if you've gotten to the point where the person is saying, you know, I think this is my, this is my space, this is where I want to camp. And let's just take one example, an officer is talking to them and says, well, this particular place is illegal under the city ordinance. But, you know, we can possibly offer you a shelter space. Let me go on my interactive app and see if there is an available shelter space. And let's say there isn't. And so then the, the person is going to be required to move to a different part of the city. And I think the officer in the field is not going to deny them that information or give them at least some helpful constructive suggestion as to where they might, they might go. I think I previously said, we don't want to designate specific locations that could then turn into what I think has been shown to be a very adverse situation for both residents and the remainder of the community, i.e. turning into a, an overnight village of some sort. But I'm, I'm confident that the officers in the field would assist in that regard. If somebody in the end just refuses to participate, they get a ticket that is effectively a traffic ticket. It gives them a day in court when they can contest the citation. Depending on what we do with the fines going forward, the fine for the first offense would be a hundred dollars. Second offense, two hundred dollars, third offense, five hundred dollars. Recognizing that the courts have basically said that may not be a reasonable, that may be an excessive fine. That's what we need to look at. Meanwhile, the, the decision on how much that fine would be, those fines are expressed as up to. While we are in the process of looking at this, it's up to my office, basically, to present the court with the city's desired alternative. All of that bypasses the things we're trying to do with, with diversion, which would effectively be no prosecution of the infraction and assistance in other respects to help them get their life on track if they, if they're willing to accept that help. So that's all, all of that's part of the mix. It's not a simple, I don't think it, I don't see it as a simple conversation, and I don't think anyone at EPD would see it as just a cut and dried conversation.
Right, it'd just be the last, last ditch effort in the tool bag for an officer to use, basically.
That's my belief.
Got it, thank you.
Do we have any other questions, Councilmember Castellano?
I have a couple of questions. One is about timing. And so, you know, we, we have some housing projects pending, you know, and we're in the midst of a pandemic when the CAC has advised us not to include, to clear encampments. So I'm curious why we're not waiting until those housing projects have been implemented and until there's a vaccine available for the virus?
Well, that's, I don't know that there's a legal attorney type answer to that question. I think that's a political question. We've, we've gone for a long period of time with basically zero enforcement. But I think that individual council members are probably aware of some situations that have caused problems for the business community, which I understand that homeless people are also experiencing an uptick of problems because of COVID, but I think we understand that a great, that much of our business community has also experienced huge problems because of COVID. This just is an add-on to that. So we're, we're trying to, this is not something that we haven't been thinking about, I think, especially on the legal side for quite a long time, trying to, to feel our way through a thicket of, and trying to find our way through the, the meaning of various court decisions that have come down. And I think the, the answer is, from the point of view of the city attorney's office, we just kind of arrived at a conclusion as to what would be legal. Others might disagree with that, of course, but in our opinion, the ordinance before you is legal with the possible exception of that aspect I, I mentioned relative to the size of fines. But, you know, that's, that's an answer that is basically yours to make as a council member.
Thank you. I have, I guess, one more question, maybe it's a two-part question, but I'm curious about this, one thousand three hundred and thirty six acres. Does it include sidewalks?
No, it includes all public property that's available, so it includes all city-owned property, county-owned property, state-owned property, and the city building.
And, and this property, none of this property is fenced or, you know, it's, people could actually get onto this.
I know that for all of the city-owned property, it's not fenced. I now venture to say that the Caltrans state-owned property is not fenced. I couldn't guarantee the county portion of that. We didn't break it down and look into what it's fenced and what it's not, but I know that the city, other than the courtyard, we don't have very many fenced properties.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions about this? No? Did we have any comments on this?
Ms. Madam Mayor, is that clear that you mean public comment?
Public comment, yeah.
Yes. Hello?
So I'm waiting for Ken, Assistant City Manager Powell, to give me direction on who's first.
You're muted, Pam. My screen had disappeared, so I apologize. Yes, Mayor, we do have some public commenters. Some are on the line, on the Zoom call, and then I do have someone to call on the phone. We, I can call him out here. And our first one that I have, she, I don't have a name for her. Her email is stepnext@sonic.net. Is she on the line? All right, then I'll go to our next caller, which is Janelle Egger.
Hello, Janelle.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Congratulations on the work being done in regards to the various types of housings that we've discussed. I think it's important to remember that shelter is one specific type of housing and some of these other things may not be shelter. I didn't know that Betty Chin's things were shelters. So I think there's that distinction we need to keep in mind. But after my comments first, I wish to express concern with easy, even using infractions that involve fine or other impact on people's lives. While I respect diversion and restored justice, those still imply a crime was committed. And in the last meeting on this, it was suggested this was a means to engage in conversation with people. I suggest alternate means to be found to engage people. I would also like to note two more technical things. The map of the, that was presented with the agenda still has a discrepancy between what is mentioned in the code and what is in the map. I think it's the top one there. And I think there's also a discrepancy between the code section that, oh, and there's also, doesn't that map does not include the zoo and other parks and properties that are excluded. And after the recent conversation about all the acreage that is available for people, which I was not aware of, I would suggest a map of that. That many acres is not telling people specific places to go, is just giving them the information. So a map of all this available acreage would be fantastic if you go through with this. But I really think you should try something else. I sent you the, the thing about offering individual people a place and then finding them to be illegal because they were offered a place? I don't think that jives with the court case. I think the court case says real clearly, the Boise case says, if there's not enough spaces, you can't say that they, they have access. That's, it's just, it's unreasonable to say that you have three hundred miles, told the Coast Commission, there were three hundred people that were on the streets. It's, and if there's five or ten beds, it's not reasonable to say that three hundred people have access to five beds and then go out and pick certain people to say that they have access. Thanks for the warning, bye.
Thank you.
Mayor, the person, actually, I don't have a phone call on this item. I do on the other.
Oh, you don't? Okay, so is that the only, I, the only call on this one?
That has signed up. I don't know if any of the other Zoom participants had, were wanting to speak, if you could raise.
Yeah. I don't see any hand, do you see any hands raised?
No, I'm just going through and no, I don't.
All right, in that case, I'll bring it back to council for comments or motion. Councilmember Allison and then Castellano.
Um, so last meeting, I spoke in detail sort of about the philosophy of having fairness and balance for all residents, and I won't go into that. I'll just say, I think it is important to have something on the books for the city because, you know, we, we that, I guess, we're feedback, I would have to respect that, you know, we have citizens of, of every type in the city and that, that, you know, they all, they, rights, they all deserve fairness. And if we don't have any tools to ensure justice for all, then, you know, I think, I think that's an issue. And we haven't had one since September, I think, in regards to this. So I really like the approach that an infraction is a very last option. And I, I definitely do believe that, you know, our local law enforcement realizes that we can't cite our way out of these issues and that we have to exhaust every other approach before we get to a citation. So I, but also a citation can be a tool as a last ditch effort to, to have some sort of movement with, with issues that can occur. So I think, I think overall, this is a fair, fair ordinance and I support it.
Okay, Councilmember Castellano.
Let's see, first, I just want to speak to other ordinances and policies we already have in place that address obstruction, park hours, sitting, lying in the right of way on sidewalks, where people can leave their belongings. You know, it, so, so we do have things in place that support businesses in the public and that can regulate things like that. I, I will continue to advocate that rather than looking at any one ordinance on its own, I think it would be much wiser to actually look at the, take a more holistic approach to this and involve advocates as collaborators rather than adversaries in, in this process. You know, maybe that's a, a bit of an excessive term, but, you know, we certainly have not been working, I think, collaboratively on this. And this is, you know, a very important issue. I, I also do have real concerns that we're basically enacting, you know, or people are proposing an ordinance when the CDC has specifically advised not to clear encampments. You know, I do think there are other things in place that can address problematic or challenging behaviors or things like that without potentially creating a health risk. You know, and I would advise waiting and looking at this when we have measures in place that can address the health risk. I think that there's nothing wrong with, you know, we, we've been going for a while in, in our current state, and I don't think anything has, you know, fallen apart yet. Yes, there have been challenges. I, I hear about them and, you know, many of them are more about obstruction, which can, can already be addressed. You know, I would, I would think it would make more sense to look at expanding maybe how we look at obstruction rather than look at camping personally. But I think that it would make a lot more sense to, if, if this is the best policy to wait until there's a vaccine in place at the very least and people have access to that vaccine. You know, I also think if this were to be adopted, that we should adopt an eight-month review of it in order to assess how, what it's doing within the community. So that's what I have to say at this point.
All right, anything else? Councilmember Messner? Councilmember Messner?
Uh, let's see. There we go. I'm off mute. So I would actually argue a little bit, argue back that we've actually done a lot of work toward these issues and have created a lot of partnerships over the years since I've been on council. I'm not sure if that's true. I mean, you may not have found that to be true, but I have because I've been involved in a lot of it. And we have Cape and Uplift and Sea Set and Pathway to Payday and Hensworth Program. We've changed city codes to make it possible for more housing. We've been aggressively adding that to our city. We changed all of our, we changed our ability to have Betty Chin open up her facilities and greater facilities as well and emergency facilities. We just as director or as city council, her council, sorry, our city manager has mentioned tonight that there are hundreds of beds actually available and that people are, we have not had overcapacity so far. That we have this app that was created to help reveal where these spaces are. It's a tool for the officers to be able to work with people. When there is an ordinance in place, what it does is it provides the opportunity for them to actually listen when they don't want to listen and work with shelters. And it is, it is a real challenge for not only our officers and some of our community members, but especially businesses as well. When they are facing these issues with this camp, camping, people camping in their doorways and all over the place. And the ordinances we have in place clearly are not enough. And that's part of why this has come forward. And it's been a long time in coming, actually. Um, I think that there are some things that we have changed already from last meeting. We actually addressed the infraction as opposed to misdemeanor issue. As City Attorney Black mentioned earlier, we may want to look at the actual dollar amounts and all of that, because that's something that probably does need to be addressed in greater detail. Don't know that we want to necessarily do that tonight. It might be a little much to actually take on tonight, but, but I, I would encourage that to be done for sure. And I like the idea that of mentioning, we need to take a look at it again in the future, see how it's doing. Like, that should be true of pretty much everything that we implement, that we do check-ins on how that, how things are going and how well we're doing and where there might be problems to address. And that I do think that this is really necessary. It's been something that we've worked a long time on. Not just this piece, this is just another piece of all the work that we've been doing for many years. Um, and we've worked with a lot of partners in this. So just to mention that, I definitely think that it's something that we need to move forward on at this point. And and where there might be adjustments that need to be made, including those fees that, that City Attorney Black mentioned earlier. I think those things should definitely happen. I don't know if there's anything else that I need to address, but I do think that we should go ahead and accept this ordinance. So I will make the motion to waive full reading. Read by title only and introduce bill number nine eight nine dash CS and ordinance of the city of Eureka repealing and replacing section 93.02 of title nine chapters 93, Parks and Recreation Camping.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Austin. And now discussion, that will be Councilmember Castellano, then Councilmember Royo.
If I might, before we move on past the motion, I think technically this is the adoption and not the introduction.
Oh.
So what, what you read? So I didn't, do I need to just say adopt? I adopt the, is that the language or what, what?
Instead of introduce it, this, this motion is the adoption. So I think the court can just fix that in reciting the motion.
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Councilmember.
Now, Council.
Would you like to go first since I've already spoken? Okay. Go ahead. Let's see. I, I just want to speak. I, I was not at all implying that the city in general is adversarial to advocates. Just, uh, we have not partnered with them on this specific ordinance. You know, I definitely recognize that we are involved with many collaborative projects. You know, and so in, in my mind, I, I ask, well, why not on this also? And, you know, for, for instance, today, we did receive comment from the National Homeless Law Center with concerns about this ordinance, you know, stating that they'd be happy to work with us to develop policies for everyone. So, you know, there, there are people out there offering to work with us on this ordinance. So I just want to make sure that is clear. Um, I'm wondering if Councilmember Messner and then Allison would have accepted a friendly amendment that would include an eight month review to this or, to this ordinance.
What do you mean by an eight month review? Like, like we'll just reexamine this or look for amendments? So what you're stating?
Um, basically to kind of with information on how it's, how it's doing, like what's happening with it in regard, in the community. You know, like, are more people in shelter? Are, you know, are there people piling up list of infractions, you know, things like that? Just like, what, what are the effects that it's having in the community? Are business owners, you know, ecstatic, things like that?
I'm, I'm fine with that. I feel like we get that information though regardless.
Yeah, I don't know that we need to make it into the motion because it's something that is encouraged. I mean, it's something that we, we do already. If there's, I mean, we could get a report. A report could happen. I mean, that, that would maybe make sense and then see where things are at. But I don't know how we would put that into a motion and into this actual ordinance, it seems.
Can we provide direction outside of the ordinance?
Answer yes, and that, that's what I would recommend is not try to add this on to the ordinance itself, but to make a separate motion or a sep, give direction by separate consensus.
Okay, that's, that's fine with me. Do I do that after this vote or?
Mute.
Oh, you're on mute, Bob.
Yes, I think after, and I think it's, I think it's covered by the presence of this item on the agenda. And so I think it's fine that you brought it up, but I would recommend just a separate direction to staff afterwards.
And I think if we can do it by consensus, that's the easiest way to do it, right?
Yeah.
All right. So we have a motion and a second, and Councilmember Royo wants to speak.
Um, I think I said something along these lines the first time that we considered this. But I, I do think this is one of those instances where it's not going to make anyone happy because it's too gentle for some and far too harsh for others. I think the modifications made around the penalties were, were good. And I, I actually do agree that we should have a map that is more clear with regard to Sequoia Park and others. I don't necessarily concur that it should be a, here's where to go because of some of the issues that that poses for us as far as not being able to provide facilities and those dispersed locations, et cetera. But to the point of, you know, people gathering during a pandemic and CDC guidance to not disperse camps. I I have noticed over, and this is purely observation over my time in Eureka, just that when there aren't very many restrictions in place, the camps seem to be, to, to be large groups of people. And I can understand why people would want to be with folks they know and feel protected. But we also don't want to encourage people to gather and be in group living situations where there are no sanitation facilities. So this is sort of one of those ordinances where I do understand how important it is, it is a tool for our enforcement folks. And I understand how much certain businesses really want it. I've had several people reach out to me with great appreciation for this, who don't feel comfortable voicing that because they'll, they're concerned that they'll be perceived to be a bad person. But who are just, have just sort of had it up to here with, with camping immediately adjacent to their business. And I, I hear them too. So anyway, this is one where I, I don't feel great about. It doesn't feel good, but I think I'm cautiously optimistic that based on the conversations we've had with our staff about the intent and application that, that this will be something that can be appropriately used as needed. And to can kind of limit that impact in certain districts where it's just, it's wearing people out and it's wearing people's good nature out. And I, I even am feeling that. So anyway, that's, those are just my comments and I'm, I'm ready for the vote, but I felt that I should say it.
Well, Councilmember Bergel, and then it looks like Councilmember Messner. I do want to let you guys know in three minutes, we're going to have to take a vote to extend the meeting if we're going to. But I would love to get this wrapped up first. So Councilmember Bergel.
Thank you. So I've been really contemplating this and thinking a lot about it. And I've been really thinking a lot about all of the work that we have done as a council, as a city with our partners to find ways to support people, community members that are, that are experiencing homelessness. And I appreciated that that was brought forth, that there was, that there is a lot going on. And I also want to bring forth something that Councilman Allison said last time, and that is that we do, we do live in a society. And there are rules, you know, and sometimes they're not comfortable. And so when I'm getting calls for the last, it's been six years that I've been on council now, regular calls and complaints about feces on the front porch of their businesses and people sleep. You know, I saw at the works now, he has a, a gate, you know, and that's not what I want for our region. You know, that's not, that, not what I want at all. I think that this ordinance is an opportunity for us to make connections with people. You know, currently the police are not enforcing, they're allowing people to sleep in the nighttime. They're not enforcing sleep time during the day or during the evenings. And so I just, though it's a challenge and it's hard to create, sometimes to create boundaries. I think that these boundaries have been needed for quite a while, quite a while. We've, we've tried a lot of different things to move this forward and to support people. And we're having the same issues that we had when I first got on council. So this is just another tool in the toolbox to hopefully, you know, help, help provide another connection that may support somebody to move in a different direction. You know, all in all, it's not our job to force people to, you know, live in a particular way, but it is our job as a council to provide a safe city where people feel comfortable walking through Old Town or through town or through parks where people don't have to clean up, you know, feces and those types of things in their front forays of their businesses regularly. And I, and I think about in COVID times especially, these business owners are really, they're really, you know, on edge. They're really working hard to keep their businesses open and they've been dealing with this stuff for quite a long time. So I'm hopeful that this tool will, will create another tool, another way for us to connect with people and to support them out. And I love the idea of not reevaluating necessarily, but certainly looking at what what hap, what's going to happen in the next eight months, you know, what has happened with the ordinance and how is it working and are there tweaks? And then the last thing I'll say is I am a fan of lowering fees completely. I think that the, the fees are outrageous. And I would really love for us to lean more towards restorative justice. And the thing about restorative justice is I heard a comment just say that, you know, well, that infers punishment. But the gift of, the gift of restorative justice is that you get to, you get to fix the problem. And you also get to make connections with people and feel good for doing something. I've done it. So I, I, I understand a little bit about restorative justice. And so I support this, this ordinance and I look forward to seeing how it changes our society.
It's nine thirty-one, Councilmember Messner, and then maybe we could take the vote after that comment.
Okay. And so should we extend the meeting right now? I'll make the motion.
No, I want, I'd like to take the vote.
All right. Um, I would just say that, you know, our current ordinance needs to be repealed and replaced. And that's part of what this is doing. And it's long overdue. It is also our philosophy, our, our officer's philosophy, our EPD's philosophy for many years, that, that excessive citing is not something that they do. And I don't think that that's going to change with this ordinance, that that's their goal. So, um, I would like to see us move forward with this. And thank you for all of your comments. I agree. And I think that a review is, I mean, you know, not a review, but a report is really important. So I would definitely support having a report in the future.
All right. So it sounds like we can take the vote on the ordinance now. We have a motion. We have a second on that. So if we have a roll call vote?
It's member Castellano.
No.
It's member Messner.
Yeah.
Councilmember Royo.
Hi.
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergel.
Yes.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Castellano dissenting. Motion carries.
Right. And then can we have a consensus to direct staff to bring this back in eight months for for a checkup? What, what word do we want to use? Okay, we're going to do an eight month.
Why, why eight months? Just, I'm just curious why that number?
I guess it would give time before the next winter to, to make changes. I feel like winter is the most sensitive and difficult time for people who are unhoused. And so it would give time to prior to winter a, address the ordinance if needed.
Okay. Yeah, I like that idea. And I, I appreciated the direction about it being like, including data about how many people have experienced some form of penalty, what that penalty looked like and what kinds of occurrences there were, that kind of thing. That would be very, very helpful. I think it's helpful for staff to know that we're looking for that in eight months so that they're able to collect it between now and then. And I think, following the chief, so I'm kind of curious, what, what do you think?
Well, I had lots of thoughts in my head for the last few minutes, but I, I heard some great points. And now that you've opened this, this box, I would say, yeah, some kind of report to council somewhere between six to nine months, just as a update on, on how the ordinance is going. I do think it's important to point out, and this was touched on a little bit. This, this isn't suddenly open up the box where suddenly EPD is going out and there's, we're doing this massive enforcement. We have an ordinance on the books right now that's outdated, doesn't comply with Boise and just needs to be gone. I want it gone off the books. And we need to have an ordinance that checks the boxes of the Martin versus Boise decision and balances everything, everything everybody was talking about with the compassion and the understanding of, uh, you know, those experiencing homelessness and the challenges and also the concerns of business owners and, and private citizens, especially on private property. And I do believe it, it does that. But, um, just to reassure everyone, we've been operating in a different philosophy for a few years. And I do believe it it does that. But um just to reassure everyone, we've been operating in a different philosophy for a few years now. And uh, you know, this really is a tool more of when there aren't other options on a limited basis. You're not going to see us suddenly go out and all of a sudden there's going to be this giant influx of citations and doing things differently. We already, as was pointed out, uh generally do not cite at night. Um, and we put that in our internal policy. It needs to be in the ordinance. Uh, even the court spoke to that and now it is. Um, you know, private property is a completely different animal, obviously, but in public spaces. And so um I, again, just to make that point, what you've just done is you repealed an ordinance that was far more open ended. And um basically was open ended to to cite under a whole wide range of reasons for camping. This new ordinance is far more restrictive and far more fair, far more balanced and all of that. And um even though I do understand some of the concerns expressed, and those are, those are important questions to raise. I think we've moved forward in a very positive direction and that report back in a few months on where we're at as we reevaluate. Um, will be great. Meanwhile, you're going to see, and I believe City Manager Slattery would wholeheartedly agree, uplift and C set in our programs and the direction that we're going with our community partnerships just continue because that is our preferred method to address homelessness in the city of Eureka. But you are going to have some people that that do have shelter opportunities that will outright absolutely uh refuse to participate in restorative justice or anything else. And we still have to have some tool. The final note, I agree. I would like to see us explore reducing those fines down to something um more proportionate under the circumstances, but still again gives us that that component still needs to be there at some point. Sorry, I went way off tangent here a little bit, but those were some of my thoughts.
Thank you, Chief. Um, okay, Councilmember Bergel, we're seven minutes over, so.
Just last thing. So in listening to Ca- uh Councilmember Castellano and your reasoning for the eight months, um, could we do something in June instead? That's, it's a little bit like, it's like seven months, but it's um, that gives us a more time uh to look at what we need to do for the winter. Or are you, I mean, I don't know, it's probably just a di- a little detail, but I would like to see it done sooner, if possible, if you're good with that.
Eight, like Chief said, sounded good, like six to eight month sort of timeframe. Sounds good. And then we're not, okay. All right, six to eight months. We'll hear great things, I hope. And now we need to, we have a couple items left on the agenda and not small ones. We have the Hatcher mediation settlement proposal, a budget overview, um city manager report. But we have removed the Humboldt Bay fire. I forgot to take that when I changed the agenda. Um, and also we have to make sure we get council reports in because this is the final meeting for council members Allison and Messner. And we want to make sure that we all get to give them lots of glory on their way out. So.
If council chooses to and the mayor chooses to, the the budget report was going to be a two-part budget report. And if you guys would like, it could be moved to the next meeting and just be a little bit longer.
I would like to propose that. Does anybody want to make a motion to do that? Do we have to make it formal or can you have consensus? Can we move the budget report?
Yeah, I move, we move the budget report. I'll second.
That sounds like, it looks like it's consensus. Thank you very much, Director Slattery. I was gonna, or no, City Manager Slattery.
City Manager.
And what I apologize and 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 to to Lane for to to Finance Director Millar for staying so long, but you gotta leave a little bit early, Director Millar.
Um, Director Millar saw the agenda. I think he he's a bright guy. Probably knew this is going to be a meeting meeting. We appreciate you, though. A lot. All right. So we're going to take that off. Um, but we do need a motion to extend the meeting.
I meant that we extend the meeting until ten thirty.
I think that's reasonable.
Painful, but I'll second that. Okay, we can finish earlier.
Um, can we have a vote on that, please?
Councilmember Castellano.
Hi.
Messner.
Hi.
Royal.
Hi.
Allison.
It was that Broadway corridor project thing. But yeah.
Bergel.
So actually, I'm wondering, this is a really meaty topic. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't bring it back on Thursday when we're refreshed. I mean, it's going to be, it's already, what time is it? Nine forty-five or something? I I I just, I was going to ask, but I guess you didn't see my hand. Is anybody interested in that?
I'd like to start it tonight and hear the public commenters in case some of them can't come on Thursday. And then if we have to continue it, I'd be willing to do that.
All right, ten thirty it is.
Okay. Yes.
In that case, let's get moving and we will move on to item D two, the Hatcher mediation settlement proposal. And that will be City Manager Slattery.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Um, and so I'm here is about the Hatcher settlement proposal. Um council directed staff uh through uh, I believe it's a meeting in October to um get into um official mediation with Hatcher to address some of the issues um that have been occurring in the past in and around the property and also to ensure that they have the ability to provide the services to uh their participants. So on November sixth, uh city staff representatives of Hatcher and a representative of Open Door Health Clinic um met with uh North uh Northern California Mediation Services um and went through a mediation process. Um, at the mediation representing the city was uh myself, um Chief Watson. And then representing Hatcher was Basara Allen, as well as Tia Tia Baratell. And I hope I didn't butcher that Tia. I apologize if I did. And then representing Open Door Health Clinic was uh Tori Starr, their um uh CEO. The process went well. Um, uh staff feels as though that there was a good back and forth and a healthy discussion, not only in our efforts to address some of the issues in the neighborhood, but also in ensuring that um Hatcher can still provide the services to the participants um that they serve. So what resulted in the in the mediation um was that um initially, you know, Hatcher had uh agreed to put up fencing around their property. Um, as soon as this proposal was accepted, um we've had concurrence from the Open Door Health Clinic that they would be funding that fencing um pending the decision this evening. Um, they've also applied for funding to um hire a monitor onsite to monitor the property in the surrounding area. Um, that is also pending this decision tonight. Once those are um uh in place, the city will look into going through a sequel process in order to update our um uh ordinance and incorporate some of these other provisions that are on there. One of them would be to perform all your syringe services programs on a mobile only basis. Um, that would um leave the brick and mortar to provide the other services, but the services related to the exchange of uh syringe services program would be done on a mobile basis. Um, the city has already contacted a consultant and is receiving a scope to go through the sequel process and analyze what the updated ordinance would look like. Um, the city also has agreed to work with Hatcher and are currently looking at different grant programs that would um um be able to be used to purchase a vehicle for them to provide these services. And um staff is pretty uh um confident that that can happen in a short timeframe. Um, once the uh uh a- after Jan- January of twenty twenty-one, uh Hatcher has agreed to provide quarterly reports that currently in the ordinance is just a a report to the city manager. But they've agreed to provide a a report in open session to council um about, you know, their program and 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 um all of the services that provide and and the statistics that result from it. Um, so what happened after the mediation is uh uh Executive Director Allen took the proposal to the um Hatcher Board for consideration. Uh, they approved the proposal with a minor amendment. And that minor amendment is to make sure that uh at an every six month basis that there's a report provided by Hatcher about how the program is working out under its new guidelines. And then also a report by the city on how's it working out for some of the issues that we um were experiencing in the past um and currently for for the um uh services they provided and around the neighborhood there. So um with that, I also uh with us here tonight is uh Executive Director Allen. Uh, they would like to uh provide a little report. And then after that report, um we'll be available to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you.
Take it away, Basara.
Thanks, Miles. Um, hello all. Uh, I'm really mostly here just to answer any questions you might have for me. Um, I would like to say that I would like to clarify that the monitor position is to be onsite during open hours and that that monitor is going to be um specifically engaged with our population to make sure that all protocols are being um taken seriously, including COVID protocols um as well as all the other agreements that people have um to take on when they begin working with us. Um, so our, because our population does sign an agreement um when they begin receiving services from Hatcher. So making sure that all of those agreements and protocols are being um taken into account and and handled responsibly. Um, we also have the mobile only service starting June first or sooner. Um, that that is going to be the lead up uh just in order to uh do the staffing modifications and et cetera, that it's going to take for us to make it possible to do both uh mobile only SSP services as well as our brick and mortar um established services, um which will continue to include medication assisted treatment, overdose prevention, treat um services and uh supplies, trainings, et cetera, um wound care, um food, clothing, all of the basic harm reduction services that we offer out of the brick and mortar will continue to be offered out of the brick and mortar minus the SSP services and the specific um syringe exchange program will be uh mobile only. Um, but everything else will continue to be um furnished at at the at the Third Street location. Um, and then also I have a meeting scheduled, I believe, with Jeff tomorrow talking about the grant process for procuring a vehicle, which is one of the roadblocks to getting the mobile only underway. Um, and so once we have that dialed in, we'll have a better idea of what the uh next uh few months will be looking like for us.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I I should also mention that I was reached out to by a representative of St. Joseph. And um there's a potential opportunity there of working with Hatcher that I'd like to um also explore um as a part of this too.
All right, Councilmember Allison.
Um, I don't mean for this question to sound inflammatory to who, anyone who responds, but um why did it take so many years and a course of mediation for Open Door to provide funding for a fence? When to me, that seems like a proactive solution.
I mean, I I can respond with what I know to be that uh, one, we have not been given feedback from the city council necessarily that offense was required or desired even. This has been an ongoing conversation. It's been a conversation at Hatcher for many years. Um we also are operating on a shoestring budget as always. And so when we fund something, we're not funding something else. So that's how this this works in nonprofit land. Um, we we get funding for a thing and that in in many cases takes funding away from something else.
Thank you. Does anybody have else have any questions? For Executive Director Al- Allen. Kim, uh Councilmember Bergel.
Thanks for being here. I'm curious, when you said that you um from the Third Street site that you would be giving out supplies, what does that mean?
I was specifically speaking of harm reduction supplies. So I mean, I'm sorry, uh overdose prevention supplies. So basically Narcan, Naloxone, um, yeah. And then also wound wound care supplies, um socks and underwear, canned food, um, you know, snack bars.
Sure. So not pipes?
No.
None of that kind of stuff? Okay.
That will all be on the vehicle.
Okay. Um, and then I personally had talked to Jessica about a fence in the past, but I'm just curious, do you know what a timeline would be to get that fence up and running?
Um, I have spoken with uh Open Door and they have agreed to start the process of uh making that fence happen as soon as everyone has actually agreed to the agreement.
Okay. And then this might be a a question for Director, I mean, City Manager Slattery um or or perhaps you. Um, so I see that June first will be the mobile um date. So two questions with that. Um, so does that mean that it'll be business as usual until June first?
As of right now, that was, that was the intent unless council should make a decision else what. Um, the other thing I should mention is that um City Attorney Black may want to, after reviewing this, make some minor adjustments. And I don't know if he has any comments on that.
And I I'd like to add that the reason for that lead time is that we have, Hatcher needs to um figure out staffing protocols. And it's going to be a pretty major transition for us to be staffing to uh different locations, basically, on all of the days that we do um syringe services, which is four days a week uh right now. And we've been talking about expanding to a fifth day. Um, and so we are going to need to figure out how we are going to staff the two locations. We're potentially going to have to do more more fundraising and grant writing to uh procure more staff. Um, and so that it's not something, this, the uh, the lead time was something I requested because we need that lead time in order to make the transition as smooth and painless as possible.
All right. Councilmember Messner.
Okay, so I have um three questions. One is I wanted to verify with City Manager Slattery um that the funding for the mobile unit would not be coming from the city. You would just be helping them make the bridge to the um funds through grants.
That's right. The timing right now is actually pretty good for that because we were looking at something similar for the uplift program. And so partnering would most likely make the grant application more competitive. And um we need to find out some parameters first. Um, as uh uh Litar said, they're going to be Jeff Davis, the program coordinator for uplift is going to be meeting to discuss um how to make that more competitive.
Okay. Um, and then second, why the SSP would not be suspended until the mobile unit is up and running?
So it was my understanding that it was council direction that we did not want to stop these services. If we didn't have something in place. Um, now that's a decision for council. But uh ever since we found out that the authorization was not approved in Eureka, we didn't stop it then. So if that's something council would like to change, then that can be discussed.
Okay, it was just um part of the questions that I've been receiving. Um, and then also the third thing is what attempts to include neighborhood partners in the mediation, you know, what they were and why why the um neighborhood was not
why the neighborhood was not included in the mediation.
So I reached out to three different members of the group that I had met with at a meeting with Councilmember Bregel. Two of them did not respond and did not want to participate. One of them did participate and the intent was to have that person involved in mediation. Approximately two days before the mediation, we received a cease and desist from a lawyer representing that group and the mediator that we were with had contacted with that lawyer and the lawyer made it clear that whatever that representative said, it wouldn't be representative of what the neighborhood group wanted. And so the mediator made his professional decision that that person should not be involved in the mediation.
Okay, thank you for addressing those questions.
Any other questions? City Manager Slattery and also in terms of inviting neighbors, there were quite a few folks outside of that original group that you tried to engage as well.
Yes.
Yeah. People to know it was a broader range.
Yeah, we tried to reach out to businesses in the area, county representatives, a lot of different people.
Mayor Seaman. Yeah, Councilmember Bregel lost connectivity and so she is now on my cellphone just and she would like to say something. Go ahead, Councilmember Bregel.
I did have another question and I didn't hear the answer to my last one, so. Is everybody there?
Yep.
Okay, so my other question was, as we were talking about business as usual, I was curious about if a van or if a vehicle could be provided earlier, say February, if that might be an option, if you guys think that you might be able to get staffing by then? And also, if yes or if no, what what is going to be different in the next six months? As far as behaviors and working with the neighborhood than has been happening in the past?
I I can say, one, I will reiterate that the transitional period, I don't think that it's a very long period of time to do all the things that we need to do to line up the transition. I think it's a reasonable amount of time. If it is, if it becomes possible to move things mobile more quickly than that, I don't think that we would be opposed to that, but I also think we need to be cautious and definitely not over commit because it's going to be a pretty major transition for us. As far as what will be different in the coming months, we are hiring a monitor who will be onsite during open hours, who will be interfacing with our population and making sure that people are conducting themselves appropriately and moving along once they've gotten services, which we're already doing and we have actually gotten excellent feedback from the officers that patrol our neighborhood that we are doing a very good job of keeping things much more. Partially because of COVID, we are, you know, really working on keeping the population moving along once they've gotten services because we can't have people, you know, too close together or too many people onsite at once. So we're going to be continuing with that with with a monitor and then also the fence will hopefully be something that is useful and makes people feel more comfortable with the location. Those are the things that we brought to the table right off the bat. Those were not things that Miles or or anyone else asked us for. Those were things that we brought to the table and said these are things that we think will make a difference to the neighborhood and for our population and voluntarily brought to the table. So you know, those those making dialing those things in is happening right now. Like, that's what's going on right now. The fence is not going to happen until an agreement has been reached on all sides.
And I'll add to that, Councilmember Bregel, that, you know, we want to make sure that not only Lasara and any staff members attached to it, but definitely the monitor has a close relationship with CSAT and EPD. So that, you know, there's things that can't be addressed by the monitor that we can assist in any sort of issues that need to be addressed.
All right, do we have any other questions?
Mayor, if I if I might make a comment, please. So City Manager mentioned that there might be some fairly minor wording issues, but I'd appreciate the opportunity to have a last look at it. And so if if you have a motion to approve, if it could include subject to final wording adjustments by by the city attorney, that would be that would be appreciated.
Okay, I think first we just counsel.
Question about that. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
There was a lag and so I couldn't tell if you were speaking right then.
Yeah, I was just saying for you to talk.
I just, in the interest of ensuring trust and communication, if there are any changes that you do make, would you be so kind as to run them by the other parties? Just to make sure there are no issues.
That would definitely be the intent of my preliminary instructions with City Attorney Black. They're not subjected to the actual requirements of the, but anyway, yes, we will definitely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if, do we have any more questions? If not, I'll turn it over to public comment.
So Mayor, we do have our first caller. I have dialed her and she is on the phone to speak and that is Ms. Cindy Olson. And Ms. Olson, you will have three minutes to go ahead.
We're ready for you.
Business owner in downtown Eureka and I want to say how contentious this has been over the past three years. First of all, the definition of insanity is repeating the same thing over and over and expecting a different outcome. Why is the city of Eureka continuing to give Hatcher chance after chance? They have destroyed the beautiful city of Eureka with their needle litter. The followers of Hatcher have threatened the citizens of Eureka and author leaders of Hatcher have been caught in a sting selling drugs. There are other needle dispensers to choose from. So now you think putting up a security fence at Hatcher location and buying them a vehicle costing the taxpayers forty thousand is going to make Hatcher change their ways? How stupid you must think the citizens of Eureka to be. Apparently, the city is getting money for each needle that is given out. That is why hundreds of needles are given out on a daily basis. Why are the great citizens of Eureka paying for a needle truck? This is outrageous. The forty thousand should be given to the businesses that have been devastated by the COVID-19 disaster. Let Hatcher or George Soros buy their own truck to distribute needles to addicts. It appears that at least forty to fifty percent of the local businesses in Eureka are now closed. I have never heard anything from the Eureka City Council on programs that could help the small business owners get back on their feet. Eureka has one of the highest crime rates in America, not California, but the entire United States when compared to smaller sized communities as ourselves. A good portion of this has been brought on by bringing in the addicts into our areas so they can steal survivor drugs. Take a ride up Fifth Street at night and take a look. They are in all the alcoves of the businesses everywhere. Every day, we have to clean up from the night before. Why do you want this once beautiful city to look like San Francisco, Los Angeles, or Seattle? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, we do have some members who are on the Zoom call right now and if, let me go through, Gary Lewis has signed up to speak.
Thank you.
Hello, I should explain that I have a shared driveway agreement with my neighbor. So I was surprised to read in the newspaper that my neighbor's tenant, Hatcher, has signed an agreement with the city to build a fence that affects this shared area. Mistress Slattery, send me a drawing and I'll be happy to talk to the owner about it. There are other legal issues with the proposed mediation agreement that council needs to consider. It illegally contracts away the city's legislative authority to regulate SEP programs in the future. While the city is committed to adopt new SEP regulations that will effectively manage and control future SEP operations to minimize damage to the environment and the public safety, this agreement attempts to limit the city's legislative authority to regulations that would have to allow Hatcher's continued operations consistent with this agreement. An agreement of this nature that limits and controls the legislative authority of the city council is illegal and void. For example, what if the new city council decides it doesn't like mobile SEP operations and wants to ban them? This agreement illegally attempts to bind the hands of the council to allow future mobile SEP services in and around the city as a part of any future regulations they may adopt. Otherwise, the city is in violation of this agreement. Now, I'm sorry to say that this agreement reflects the incompetence, even if innocent, of the city in two critical areas. First, the management of SEPs, and second, the legal requirements of CEQA. Under this agreement, the city is blundering forward with a commitment to allow Hatcher to pursue specified future operations without any knowledge or control of the consequences and making a major discretionary decision that impacts the environment without any prior CEQA review. This is a blatant violation of state law. The city council should step back from this agreement and before making any commitments to any SEP program, the city should get competent advice from consultants, experts, and attorneys that will advise you on how to best and competently and legally pursue a brand new SEP program that the city has never actually engaged in before. Any approval of an agreement of any kind with Hatcher should be done by the new incoming council and not the old one. It's the new council that will have to deal with Hatcher in the future and the consequences of allowing Hatcher to further degrade the environment and health and safety of the city of Eureka. Now, you may feel that we're working against you, but in fact, our efforts have helped give you all the cards when negotiating with Hatcher. They have no authority to operate. You could have asked them to sign any agreement or be shut down. All operations moved away from residential neighborhoods, one to one exchange, nothing. And instead of a twenty-four hour security guard, we are left with what sounds like a hall monitor for a local elementary school. You can do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Judy Souza.
Thank you. Are you there, Judy?
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Hallelujah. A dispute exists between the parties because the Humboldt Area Center for Harm Reduction has been giving the city the finger for the past four years and the council is tired of it. The solution was to hire a mediator to work on giving Hatcher pretty much everything they could ask for. Install a security fence? Sure, but when? There is no timeline and nothing in writing. Help with the vehicle? No problem. What does Hatcher use to go to Arcata now and why is that not suitable for their future mobile exchange? Do citizens get to see what is submitted to CEQA? The numbers submitted by Hatcher in the past has not exactly been accurate and there has been no oversight. Hire a person to serve as a monitor who will manage the surrounding area to the best of their ability. Let's ask what the best of their ability means. How do you, how about you just get them to retain someone who can manage it and keep people under control? Section D1 states to support, to perform SSP by mobile delivery only. Once again, the same people will be drawn to the static location, the same problems are likely to occur, given the monitor only need to control the location to the best of their ability. Perhaps D3 speaks at all. The city shall retain a mutually acceptable consultant to conduct reviews of Hatcher's harm reduction program. How about just once, the city treats Hatcher like any other business and ensures it has the same amount of impact as any other business and Hatcher does not get to have a say in everything about its existence? Amendment number one on page four is also identified as the third amendment to the agreement in the last paragraph. Are there two other agreements that are not attached? This agreement has no consequences for nonperformance, no timelines for compliance, and no citizen input. CEQA environmental review has to occur before Hatcher or any SEP is given approval to operate in Eureka through an agreement like this. This agreement illegally puts the cart before the horse by promising Hatcher it will be allowed to operate in the future. A decision requiring CEQA analysis with the notion that after Hatcher has been given the okay for future SEP operations, the city will figure out regulations to permit and manage SEPs and do CEQA environmental review after the fact. This agreement puts a bullseye on the city for litigation to undo the damage done by an illegal approval of the agreement that violates CEQA and unlawfully delegates the city's legislative authority. The city should choose a different path and engage in a truly public process to adopt responsible and competent regulations for SEPs before it gives any approval to any SEP to operate in Eureka with legally required environmental review in that process so that the environment of our city and all of Eureka's citizens are served and protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any others?
Mayor, that's all the speakers that I had signed up.
All righty, then I will bring it back to council for comments or do we need a motion? Yes, we need a motion tonight.
What about me?
I'm sorry, do we have another speaker? All right. Another speaker, Mayor.
All righty. So that would be Avet Lewis.
Yes, good evening. I'd just like to remind the city council and the mayor that having support for or interest in supporting a SEP in Eureka doesn't mean that you have to agree to this haphazard proposal. I believe that you all have good intentions, but you must follow regulations, you must follow the law, you must plan and you must consider all of the stakeholders, including the community which was not part of this mediation. There are a lot more people in the community than those Mr. Slattery contacted. I am not sure what your ties are to Hatcher or to Open Door, but agreeing with this proposal will raise questions regarding who is governing who. Mentioned in this settlement proposal is the intention to obtain CEQA approval. The guidelines for the implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act are very clear. These guidelines state that the city shall not undertake actions of the matter included in this proposal before CEQA compliance. It is unlawful for the city to agree with this proposal. It is already unacceptable that the city has allowed Hatcher to continue operations without a permit or authorization. You are violating state law by allowing Hatcher to continue using a site that is subject to CEQA review. That you acquiesce with all of this tells the world that everybody and anybody is welcome to come and run a SEP in Eureka. Why are you doing this? This mediation settlement proposal presented by the city manager takes for granted that a SEP in Eureka can pass an environmental review. He speaks of it as if only an application is needed to be completed and filed. Don't be misled. The requirements are extensive and not easy to meet. It includes many steps and it involves many people. I ask that you please consider your position and the law and respond accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you and thanks for speaking up. So we didn't miss you, is what I meant. All right, so now I'll bring it back to council. For, so I just want to remind everybody, we have fifteen minutes, so it's very possible this might get carried over. But I will still bring it back. Councilmember Castellano.
Just a quick question for City Attorney Black. I'm just wondering if you could speak to some of the I'm just wondering if you could speak to some of the comments about kind of the order of operations and things like that in terms of like CEQA and, and that process.
Yeah, so I don't want to go into detail about a matter that is, first of all, a very direct threat of litigation, but also involves my legal advice to you as a council, which probably should take place mainly in closed session. I will say this, they, it's very evident that the challenge to Hatcher's quote-unquote "continued operation" without going through CEQA is misplaced because any claim that the city has violated CEQA would have had to have been brought approximately two years ago. And that claim is legally barred now by the statute of limitations. As far as a change in Hatcher's operations, my belief is the intent of the agreement is to implement CEQA and to make the implementation of the substantive plan of the agreement subject to CEQA. And it's being construed that this is a binding commitment of the city to approve a particular approach. And to the extent that approach changes the way things are done, there is an argument that CEQA needs to be done, but I would argue that CEQA will be done before any amendment to the ordinance takes place. So there's a lot, a lot of smoke being blown by the attorney that is presenting this legal argument. But I don't think it has a lot of substance.
Alright, do we have any other comments?
Comments from council?
Yes.
I do.
Oh, good. Then all council, Councilmember Royo and then Messner.
I just wanted to add that as someone who's familiar with the CEQA side of doing the environmental review and, you know, granted, not for this specific type of operation, but as someone who's done lots of CEQA work, I, lots of planning efforts happen that do not, you know, planning and collaboration work happens that does not trigger CEQA in the way that the concerns are being brought up. So I have confidence that this approach is a good one. That's all I wanted to add.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Messner and then Councilmember Bergel.
So I think I have a clarification I would like to understand perhaps better, and that is, I believe that the state did not renew. Is, is it correct that the state did not renew Hatcher's application this year?
So.
I don't know what the terminology is, but.
The state renewed their authorization, just not within city of Eureka limits.
Okay, so where does that put the city of Eureka in regard to what we, what our determinations are if they operate within the city?
Well, you know, we, Hatcher was operating within the city prior to them getting authorization in the first place. We approved the resolution back in 2016 that helped get them funding. And they were operating, for the most part, at a different location for over two years prior to getting that authorization. So, and City Attorney Black can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no requirement for us to authorize them to, to perform SEP services in the city. We did pass an ordinance in 2018 that the city attorney referred to, and that regulates SEPs in the city, but it wasn't specific to Hatcher.
Is because the state did not, because it did not include the city of Eureka, does that mean that city has full control as stated in regard to what happens within the city with a SEP?
Yes, it does, but we would have to go through processes in order to, to put the framework together for that control. So let's say we wanted to ban SEPs in the city. We'd have to go through a process of an ordinance, or if we wanted to allow SEPs in other areas that's not currently in our ordinance now, we would need to amend that ordinance and make those changes.
And so in regard to some of the things that have come forward, we could have a lot more say in how that occurs and how that happened. For instance, a fence, you, things couldn't happen without that process being in place, which, by the way, we actually have talked about a fence for a number of years since I've been on council. So this is not the first mention of it, for sure. So I was just curious if those are the kinds of things that, that should be being looked at in regard to how we aim it, that it would be very intentional about all of those, these things? Or the.
Yes, and I think that when it comes back, I think even going through the CEQA process, there's going to need to be some back and forth with Hatcher so that, you know, there may be mitigation measures that need to be implemented that we need to make sure that those are in place, depending on what the findings were for CEQA. You know, if it's a mitigated neg deck, what are, what are the mitigation measures that we need to do in order to comply with CEQA? It's an environmental impact report. What are the measures that we have to do in order to, depending on what the level is, we're going to have to come up with those things. And then once those are figured out, we can incorporate those into the ordinance.
Okay, I, I just wanted to clarify that because I think before we were very much told that there was not, there was not much option, you know, we were, our hands were kind of tied. But at this juncture, from what I'm hearing right now, is it's the opposite of that. We actually have really full control of what we want done within the city.
We definitely do, and I think we know, need to make sure that in doing that, that the services that are provided are still able to be provided for those people that are benefiting from it, but yes.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other comments? Councilmember Bergel.
I'm back. Hi. So I still, I still have concerns about the business as usual, the distribution in the interim period. I still am not clear about how things will be different. I understand, you know, that there's going to be a fence going to be put up and that, that, you know, we're going to move towards mobile SEPs and that there is the potential for you to, or for Hatcher to get a vehicle earlier, potentially depending on staffing, that they will have a monitor that hopefully will be working with CSET and the police, which I appreciate, and I appreciate that they're working well with the police. But I have concerns about the community at large in that neighborhood. You know, currently, I got a call today from a woman who was just in tears and, and just tired of it, just tired of having to live this way all the time. This is a person that's lived there for a while and has lived there with the homeless population, in fact, has good relationships with them. And this is a different crowd, and so I'm, you know, probably both and. But I just, I guess I need some clarification more about how, how is it going to be different? And how are we going to know it's going to be different? I mean, I'm sure the neighbors will be calling, but, but what else? That's kind of where I'm at with it. I, I'm undecided. I, I am, I am in support of the fence and the monitor and the reporting and the mobile SEP. It's the interim part that I'm struggling with. And so if I could get some sort of clarification on how that's going to be different for that community that lives over there in the interim, I would love to hear it.
We're, we're hoping that those measures in place will address a lot of those issues. I think that the reporting is going to be a good venue to, to figure those things out. We did increase the frequency of reporting and made it in an open, public city council meeting. So when these are scheduled, they'll be publicly noticed. When Hatcher provides reports, we'll partner with them on putting those reports together for council. And at that point in time, concerns can be brought up about the services provided or the issues that are, that are raised by the neighborhood. It's very similar to the camping ordinance, that this ordinance, you know, can be amended, things can change. And as we get these reports back and they're founded and we determine that there are issues, whether it's to the services or to the adjacent neighborhood, we can make those adjustments to, to the proposal. I would also like to say that, you know, it would probably be in our best interest to make sure that we go through CEQA before we have them go to those mobile services. I'm hoping that that'll happen, you know, in a short timeframe, but we won't know that until we get the project description out to the consultant and have them analyze it. So we'll have a better idea of when that can happen.
So I understand all of that, City Manager Slattery. But I guess what I want to know is what is going to be different in their practice? What's going to be different in their practice with the way that they're doing business today? Because January 1st is still a ways away. And how are we going to ensure that, that these things are going to be taking place through the next six months? Because I'm not, I'm not hearing that. And, and as you said, Director Slattery, that this is a lot like the camping ordinance in that we have to look at the whole community as well as, as the individual business. And, you know, I think that we've been remiss in doing that. I know that I have on different occasions. And I think it's time that we really have an opportunity to, to make some changes in this next six months. So I'm just curious, I just would love to hear how it's going to be different.
You know.
So other than those.
Go ahead, Miles.
So other than those things that we mentioned already, I mean, like City Attorney Black spoke to, when we do do this, first of all, we, we're not going to update until we go through CEQA. But when we do put the ordinances, it won't even be in relation to the things that are put into the proposal that is in front of you today. But there's also provisions that we can put in there that make sure if they're not following these guidelines, then we have actions that we can take to make sure that they are in compliance with it. Right now, we are going to be maintaining the same ordinance. So at, within the six months that you're talking about, I don't think I can guarantee anything. I think we're going based off good faith with the better relationship that we've had with Hatcher right now. And until we get an ordinance in place that's going to be compliant with CEQA, we won't have those provisions in place to, to have, you know, actions we can take to stop them from doing whatever's going on. So for the first six months now, unfortunately, we won't have a mechanism to ensure that because of the issues that City Attorney Black brought up, until we update our ordinance.
Okay, so you're saying it's good, good faith is what you're saying? So is that what we should tell the people that live in that area and that go to the library and those types of things? It's good faith?
I, I, I don't think that's what we should tell the people, but that's what we're going off of right now. If there are other issues that raise to the level of enforcement, we do have things in place for that.
I'd like to respond as well and say that, you know, I have made myself available to anyone who wants to speak to me one-on-one. And I am taking people's considerations seriously. And we're doing the best that we can to address the concerns that are being brought to us. And we will continue doing that. And the process of gaining trust is a two-way street, as has been said here on a number of occasions. And we're doing our best to walk, you know, hand in hand with city council, with Miles, with the city of Eureka to address concerns that are being brought. And we will continue doing that. And the process of moving to mobile only is going to take time. And we can't take shortcuts that are going to get anybody in trouble or make things untenable for anyone, obviously. So I think that the process that we've been going through so far has yielded good results. I feel like the trust that we've been building, at least between myself and Miles and others who have been engaged right, right, you know, with the process has been helpful, has yielded some element of trust where we're being able to work together to serve both the population that Hatcher serves and take into account the concerns of the larger community. It's going to be a process. It's going to take some time, but we're doing the best that we can to take into consideration all points of view.
Well, all due respect, LaSara, I've heard that before. So I just, I do have my concerns about moving forward. I do agree with the, with the modifications. I'm just concerned about the next six months. I'm just concerned about the next six months.
So with that, it is 10:32. We did anticipate that this may go over. And I want to be respectful, that's what you all voted on. And so it is my job to make sure we address this. We have two people who thought this was their last meeting. So this is what I need you guys to decide. Are we pushing through tonight? Or are we going to try to reschedule this and continue the conversation?
I'm fine with Thursday.
You're fine with Thursday?
Yep.
I can't until like 7:30 on Thursday. I already have something that I arrange with the group.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
At 7:30?
Yeah, let's just not take hours to discuss things. But yeah, let's, we, we can go 7:30 to 10:30 again. How about that?
I'm okay with the 7:30. You can do it.
I, I want to ask before we go down that road, is there a sense that we could make a decision in the next half hour? I don't want to rush us, but I, I'm wondering if there's a sense that that could happen. It felt like we all had some things to say, and now here we are.
I'm kind of wondering the same thing. I would like to see if we could finish this up as well, if it's possible.
I am perfectly happy with pushing through and getting it done and then, and then being done for the week. But we need to have at least a majority on that. So it looks like Leslie's good on that. I guess we need a motion then.
To extend the meeting till 11 o'clock.
I have a comment.
And about the time?
Yeah, about the time. So I feel like, I mean, we could push through till 11 tonight. And I think that most questions have been answered. My concern, again, is, you know, good faith, that's not going to work for the community.
Wait, this is a time question. Yet you're going off onto the topic.
Well, because it, it could take longer than 30 minutes or it could take five minutes to get the clarification, but that's what I need.
Yeah, I haven't really spoke, given too many comments yet. And I don't know if we're all going to agree on the same trajectory. So I was thinking maybe, I mean, I'm a night shifter. I could go all night, but I feel like we should all be, you know, clear-minded for this.
So how do people feel about 7:30 on Thursday? And, and that includes you, Larissa, Executive Director Allen. And you should, you need to be included.
Thank you. I, I have plans on Thursday, but I'll change them.
I, I just don't know what we're going to achieve.
I, I just don't know what we're going to achieve, um, on Thursday that we couldn't achieve now. But if, if, if the, if it's, if it's just more conversation about what it will take to build trust between us, then I think we should have that conversation publicly and openly. Um, I, but I don't know. I, I don't know if anything is going, like any amount of couple hours of conversation is going to do the, do that for, for those of you who are concerned.
So let me go through person, council member by council member and kind of get an, an idea of what you guys are thinking. So, uh, council member Royal, you feel like maybe this is a discussion we could complete tonight? If we focused on it and council member Messner, what's your preference?
I feel like we could do that tonight as well, if it's possible. I mean, I would be willing to add that. I would prefer not to add another night.
Okay, council member Castellano.
I'd be game to continue tonight. Uh, I have like literally ten hours of meetings in a row on Thursday. So, but I could do it, you know, I could do it, but I'd be.
But you'll be just as worn out then as you would be tonight. Um, council member Allison?
Um, either or, I just have, um, yeah, I mean, I, I just know regardless, we have to resume on Thursday, right? For the rest of the agenda items.
No, well, well, we, we'll just have to do, maybe we'll just do council member reports. And make them, yeah, we'll have to do them tonight.
Okay.
Um, okay. So it sounds, Kim?
So I would say that right now, today, I'm willing to, um, accept the, um, whatever it is, the agreement. Um, but I am not willing to accept them doing the SEPS program the next six months without any, um, I, 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 I'm just not clear on that. I just can't see that changing. Okay.
I could say something, I just, I just want to be clear, Councilmember Brugel. There is nothing that we can do right now to force that to happen. Um, there's nothing that we could do to update the ordinance, to put the provisions in place that gives us the the tools to stop them from doing anything. So, um,
So we could allow them to do everything else at their site except for the syringe exchange?
We would have to update our ordinance in order to do that and make it binding for them to be forced to do that. Other than them saying that we agree to that and will do that, while they could say that, we have nothing in place that would ensure that they're doing that.
That's not, uh, that's not some, that's not a decision that I'm empowered to make without board input.
So I, I, at this point, I'm just going to say we have, we're moving forward. Cause now we've moved on to the conversation and we never fit.
Yes.
Um, we, but we need to have somebody extend this, because that's.
Move extension till eleven.
Yeah. Okay, that's only twenty minutes. Okay, Heidi, uh, second, Natalie in second, please.
Yes.
Yes.
So councilman Castellano.
Hi.
Messner.
Hi.
Royal.
Hi.
Allison.
Sure, yes.
Brugel.
Till when? Eleven thirty?
You said eleven, which is twenty minutes.
Oh, I think we should extend it longer, but okay, eleven's fine.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Okay. So, council member Messner.
Um, so I guess I'm a little confused by what you just said, um, City Manager Slattery, because I thought that, um, that the resolution was rescinded. It has already been rescinded because we did that month ago, or however long ago that was. Um, and so I think that that does mean that there is some, it's rescinded. So I don't understand. I mean, can you please clarify what you're saying? Cause that, that doesn't make sense to me.
You're referring, you're referring to a resolution that was generated in order for them to get funding that we repealed and replaced with a different resolution that wasn't specific to Hatcher. What I'm talking about is an ordinance that we put in place in two thousand and eighteen that regulates the operations of SEP. They're totally separate thing. One is a resolution which doesn't have any ethical legal authority. Um, and ordinance does.
But how does that relate to, um, to Hatcher operating when the resolution was rescinded for hap- with Hatcher removed from that resolution?
It was still a general resolution stating councils' um, desire to, um, have SEPS and, and their, their reasoning behind having SEPS. It didn't, while it didn't specify Hatcher, it didn't say you will not have Hatcher. It just supported SEPS in general.
And so, um, council member Brugel's suggestion to not allow the needle exchange part of that until that mobile unit could be in place. Um, how does that conflict with that? How, how is that not? I'm, I'm confused on that part.
So City Attorney Black can chime in, i- if, if I'm wrong, but I think that would require an amendment of the ordinance that we currently have in order to stop that from happening.
So I haven't been asked exactly this question before, but I believe that City Manager Slattery is correct. That we, we would have to amend the existing ordinance.
Okay, council member Castellano.
Um, in, but, but I, I, I just kind of reread the agreement again, or, or the, the settlement proposal and you know, I mean, I feel like there have been significant steps made through that process. You know, I, I, I don't think we're at the end of the process, you know, but, but a lot of these things, you know, like the fences immediately, you know, like following or, you know, following acceptance of the proposal, you know, a lot of things are like beginning January first, twenty twenty-one. Um, so I do think that there have been things to address the, the, you know, pretty soon. Um, and I think that, um, yeah, there's, there's things that just aren't on the table tonight. Um, you know, and like healing, healing relationships, uh, ta- does, you know, I, I, what, I want to speak to what, uh, Director Allen mentioned, and that's the healing relationships take time. And I think council member Brugel also mentioned that too. And, and that I do think this, I'm hopeful that this is part of that process. Um, you know, and so I want to say that I'm comfortable making it an emotion to approve the settlement proposal between the city and the Humble Area Center for Harm Reduction.
And could you make sure that the comments that, uh, City Attorney Black put in there was, I believe.
Find me what those are.
If you, if you wouldn't mind just make the approval subject to final wording adjustments by the city attorney.
With, yes, with the approval subject to final wording adjustments by the city attorney.
All right. Thank you, Natalie. Um, do we have any more discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Castellano.
Aye.
Councilmember Messner.
Uh, nay.
Aye. Councilmember Royal.
Aye.
Councilmember Allison.
Nay.
Councilmember Brugel.
Without knowing the next six months, I'm going to say no. I support the agreement, but I do not support not having anything in place for the next six months.
Two yes votes, council member Messner, Allison, and Brugel dissenting, motion fails.
All right, uh, council. Castellano. Yeah, what do you think now?
Sorry, I, I guess I have maybe a, a follow-up question because now we don't have an agreement. Like, do we, do we bring this back at a future meeting? Um, I don't know how we're gonna address council member Brugel's concerns. I, yeah, I'm just, I'm confused now.
Yeah, wasn't it? So council member Brugel.
So I would be willing to look at this again and revisit it. As I said, I support the, um, the settlement. My concern is for the neighborhood in the next six months. Um, I just, I understand that things are going to change, but it, I, it, I, I'm, I'm sorry, but I just, I don't trust that they will without some kind of, something in place. And so, um, I would be happy to look at it again if there were some way, if we amended the ordinance perhaps, or because I think that they're a vital service to our community. Um, but I'm not willing to, to agree with just, you know, business as usual for the next six months.
So, um, council member Castellano, then I'll, I have Miss, uh, City Manager Slattery respond to what our next steps are.
Yeah, and, and maybe this will help too. I gue- I guess I just feel like some of the things that I think we want to move forward, like the fence and, and things were kind of dependent on the, uh, disagreement.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, so both, both, both the funding for the monitor as well as, uh, the open door health clinic's funding is contingent upon council approval of this. And just to address council member Brugel's, um, desires to have something done in six months. Um, short of amending the ordinance and not allowing, and City Attorney Black, please chime in if I'm wrong, short, in order to get what you're desiring and to have, it would probably require banning, um, SEP services in the city. Um, because anything other than that will likely require a secret review. And that is not a short process. And is that a good interpretation, City Attorney Black?
I, I think so. Um, I, I think what has happened, I'm not sure that staff and Miles, you can correct me on this, was really prepared to address this issue of the next six months. I think that, um, is, uh, something that was, uh, valiantly brought forward by Councilwoman Brugel. But I am thinking that, uh, we might want to keep this conversation alive. I know we're going to have two new council members if we continue it to the next regular meeting. Um, but if this, if there was a motion to reconsider tonight's vote, uh, and then if that was successful, then carry the issue over to the next meeting with special direction to staff to come back and discuss the next six months and how that's going to play out. Um, and maybe we can kind of fill the gap that was left here. Um, unaddressed, so.
Uh, council member Messner.
Um, so the reason I dissented is because this, um, exactly what council member Brugel brought forward, I, we have not spent even close to half the amount of time as a council on any other particular item as this particular one that has been over and over and over and over again, been a constant, um, rub in the city. And the only time changes sound like they will be made is when that rub is so deep and so hard that finally there's some agreement to something. But then as soon as the I, you know, things have, the pressure's off, it just ramps back up again. And it has happened for four years while I've been on council. It's been exhausting, to be frank. Um, and I think council member Allison and I were wanting to have this finished so we don't, um, create, uh, you know, other council members having to suffer through many, many days and hours and you know, years of time doing the same exact thing. Um, it's frankly been really tough. And it's, it needs to change. It needs to change. And I don't know how that can happen. I don't think a fence is going to fix that. I don't think even a mobile SEP is going to fix all the issues. There are so many issues with this particular group. Um, and they, and there's a lot of things that are done well. So I'm not, I, I'm just saying there is, with the SEP in particular, there are just so many problems. And I don't know if it's just inherent to the way it was set up originally. I don't know what was involved in it, but there are so many problems with it that it's created this issue that keeps coming back to us over and over again. And, um, and it's the first time since I've been on council that we actually have the ability to make change because our hands were tied before with the state. And that's why I asked the que- question of City Manager Slattery, because our hands were tied. And that is not true any longer. And so we need to be diligent and vigilant in how we address this for our city. It needs to be not, it needs to not continue, um, in the way it has. And a fence is not going to fix it and a mobile unit is not going to fix it. It's inherently at the very core things that need to be changed. And so I don't know how that's going to happen, but that's what's needed.
Councilmember Royal.
So I move that we, um, direct staff to bring this item back at our, at a, uh, our next agenda or a, an agenda soon after. Um, and that's folks who have thoughts on this, that they want staff to prepare for and plan for, convey those to staff along with, um, you know, the city manager working to understand the perspective of the incoming city council members. So staff can bring the right information to the meeting and be prepared for it. Um, I don't think that, it doesn't seem that folks thought it was in staff and, and parties to this thought it was going to go this way. That's what I'm noticing. So, um, it seems like people were not prepared to make other offers or provisions. And so I would just like to move that we have it brought back and, and see what we can do.
Do I have a second on that?
Well, if I can, if I can interject,
Uh huh.
The item can always be brought back, but it, the motion cannot be reconsidered unless there is a motion to reconsider. And that has to be made by one of the three members that were in the prevailing trio.
Oh, okay.
I, I retract my motion then. So I leave it as advice.
So.
Councilmember Allison.
Let me just say reconsidering does not mean necessarily adopting. It's basically allowing you to change your mind. And my suggestion was that there be a motion that would allow the council to change its mind. And then a continuance to the next regular agenda for the discussion to continue forward with the additional input that I think council member Brugel is asking for. Um, and give staff a couple of weeks to work on that, or maybe four weeks. I don't know. Um, so that's just a, that's just a suggestion.
Okay, council member Allison, you were going to say something.
Yeah, so I really commented much about this, but, um, I just recall before we went to mediation, I was, uh, in favor of authorizing a letter to be written to CDPH not renew, uh, Hatcher's ability to operate in the city. And that did not come lightly. Um, and I know I'm, I'm a lame duck council member, but I agree with what, uh, council member Messner had to say with, you know, I, I would like closure on this so that the new council doesn't have to sit in these meetings, uh, for hours and hours. Um, because, you know, I don't think, I don't think the, the input of the community has changed. Um, and I, I don't, I just don't have trust in the, in Hatcher's board. Um, you know, that, that they will change. Um, and, and I know, know that's a disservice to you, uh, Executive Director Allen, but it's just my, I've been here four years. Executive Director Allen, but it's just my, I've been here four years and the attitude of the Hatcher Board has always been an us versus them kind of approach rather than a we approach. And that and that totally discredited Hatcher's ability to be proactive in addressing issues such as, you know, why, why hasn't there been a fence? Why hasn't there been a monitor when, when there's constantly been issues? So I agree with Councilmember Bergel when saying, you know, there's trust issues in in seeing change and seeing that that things will be done differently. I I don't know what can, there can be done to fix the communication or the trust with Hatcher when sort of from the start, the original director sort of brandished all kinds of divisiveness in the community, sort of creating that us versus them attitude that I think really hurt hurt the ability for Hatcher to operate professionally and work with community members who had concerns. So whether, whether I have a a motion to reconsider, I I don't know how I feel about that when I've already felt done for some time. But like I said, two of us are lame duck council members. So I think perhaps I will leave it up to a Councilmember Bergel to decide if she wants to reconsider it or not. But I'm sitting out.
Actually, so Councilmember Bergel, I do want to hear what you have to say, but Councilmember Castellano had her hand up first.
I defer to Councilmember Bergel at this moment.
Thank you.
You could go ahead. Um, so I'm curious, if we don't reconsider the motion, can we bring it forward and amend the, amend the current ordinance and then have this conversation?
So it depends on what you want to amend in the ordinance. If we're doing anything that tries to regulate how and when and where what they do as far as a a certain services program, we, that would be a long process and we would have to go through SECA in order to, you know, comply with that. If it was to come back and say, we want to eliminate serenade service programs, I think that we could do that and bring back a draft ordinance that does that and not have to comply with SECA.
Councilmember Bergel, did you have anything after that? Are you satisfied? Okay.
Oh, hang on, here she is.
The phone thing wasn't the best idea.
Okay, she's back on my phone right now. Here she is.
Did you get to hear the end of what City Manager Slattery said?
I did not.
Okay, so if you wanted to do anything as as to regulating a SEP as to how they do it, where they do it, those type of things, we would have to comply with SECA. And it would be a longer process and it wouldn't, you know, we would have to go through SECA, then come back with some sort of amended ordinance. If you wanted to amend the ordinance that to just eliminate serenade exchange services in the city, then that's something that we could do and bring back to council and not have to comply with SECA.
So what I would like to see is as I talk to you in agenda review, I would like to see something about either no SEPs until it goes mobile and approve the, and approve the the settlement agreement or have some sort of modified SEP distribution until that time. Because currently, the way that things have been going, I'm just, I'm very concerned that things are going to be business as usual for the next six months. And if that is the case, that is going to be very problematic. It's been problematic for the last forever, and it can, will continue to be problematic.
So.
That, that is where I'm at with it.
So under your first scenario, there would be an ability to update the ordinance, ban SEP services, and start going through the SECA process to define how we want those SEP services to be regulated. Then once SECA is completed, we can come back and amend the ordinance.
So during that interim time, I had a call into Michelle Stevens, but I I haven't heard back from her yet. I'm wondering if the county couldn't take that SEP burden for the next few months until we get this organized. So that's something that I would like to look into as well.
And I've had preliminary discussions with them about expanding their services and we can revisit that.
Okay, so.
It's eleven. I don't know what.
It is eleven. And I think that where we are at this point is that this this part has failed. There's some direction to consider maybe changing the ordinance. We can't do that right now, and it can't be just one percent. So, um, are we then suggesting that we come back at another meeting to discuss this process of dropping SEP, no SEP services until we can go through the process of doing it the way we think? Is that what you're proposing?
If there's no other way.
Okay, Councilmember.
To provide accountability for the next six months, then, then yes, that is what I'm proposing.
Councilmember Castellano?
I just have a quick question. Could, could someone at the next regularly scheduled council meeting ask for this to be brought forward again? Or is that not possible?
So the approval of this settlement agreement has now failed on a three to two vote. Someone who voted among the three needs to be the moving party if this is going to be reconsidered. If something in the, the subject matter can always be brought back. If there's something entirely different, that could be brought back. But this agreement is now dead in terms of the council's ability to consider it. Unless someone, a member of the three vote, moves to reconsider, and then anybody can second that motion. And anybody can vote for that motion. But it's the instigation of a reconsideration. So reconsideration itself is not passing it. It's just keeping it alive for eventual, an eventual yay or nay vote.
Councilmember Messner?
Yeah, so point of clarification on that. What Councilmember Bergel is suggesting, would that be part of that reconsideration? Is that what you're saying? Or no, that's a completely separate thing and would need to be brought back as a separate item?
So it could be, it could be agendized for the purpose of a motion at the next regular meeting to reconsider what happened at this meeting.
Okay, but.
I'm not sure I'm clear on that.
If there's, if there's no motion tonight to reconsider, then the, the subject of Hatcher and this agreement, mediation agreement could be brought back for the purpose of, to see whether somebody has changed their mind in the interim. And that boils down to Kim because you guys are not going to be here. I think, I, I, I'm not sure exactly when the swearing in takes place, but.
But it is possible for the next meeting for Kim to be able to say she wants, that she can open this up to reconsider it?
Yeah, she could say, I'm now satisfied with the, with additional provisions dealing with the six months concern. And I'm now satisfied with those provisions and I'm ready to reconsider the original package with some additional elements. And she could make that motion. And if it gets three votes, then that all could be revived.
Larissa, do you have something to add?
It's Lysara. That's okay, that's okay. Um, I just wanted to ask for clarification if Miles and I and whoever else get together and come up with provisions for the next six months, that can be brought as a, as a different agenda item, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
And it sounds like it could be brought with the same, the same agenda item. It's just with provisions. And now I think I'm getting attention because it's after five eleven.
No, it's just because the city of Eureka has some odd rules when it comes to reconsideration. It doesn't formally follow Robert's Rules of Old Order. On Rule 5.8 for reconsider, the reconsider of any vote must be taken at the same session, but no later than the same or next calendar day to consider new information at the time of vote or to change their mind.
We only have minutes until that happens.
I stand corrected.
This happened at like my second council meeting.
Pam is our, the true parliamentarian here.
Thank you, Pam.
Roberts rules.
So, um, is Kim around? Where's Kim? Is she on your phone?
On the phone. On my phone.
I'd like to just say that I'm more than willing to meet with Miles in the next, you know, whatever, day two, three, and, you know, talk about what we might be able to come to as an agreement in an effort to make it possible to get this agenda item on the next possible agenda. Because as was brought up, the measures that are going to make the neighborhood more secure are reliant on an agreement being reached. And we cannot proceed with those elements until an agreement is reached. And so I'm willing to do what it takes to try and make that happen. And so Miles, are you willing to meet with me in the next little bit and talk about some potential provisions for the next six months?
Of course. For City Attorney Black, the one concern that I would have is whatever we do come up with, how would we make that binding for Hatcher?
Well, it would have, I, I think through the same mechanism that we're talking about here, is it, you know, like an addendum to the settlement provisions? And then you know, my, my belief is that features that would take place over the course of the next six months would be essentially, you know, come under a kind of an emergency category that I think we can move forward while still doing the necessary environmental analysis, et cetera. And a consideration of eventual consideration of ordinance amendments. Whoops, nearly lost my computer. So, you know, we'd have to see exactly what those provisions are. But I think it's certainly possible to meet the concerns that Councilmember Bergel is putting forward.
So Councilmember Bergel, given that, given that they would come back with some of those six month measures at the next meeting, would you like to reconsider?
No, I don't know. I don't know.
Well.
Yeah, I just feel like I don't, I, I so do I have to reconsider tonight? Because I would like to see the.
Yes.
Yes.
It has to be tonight. That's what Pam was saying.
Actually, she said within the next day, so that means tomorrow by midnight, I think. I do have an, well, I do have an interesting Rule 5.6, which is suspend the rules. Any council member may move to suspend the rules if necessary to accomplish a matter that would otherwise violate the rules. The motion requires a second and a majority vote is required for passage. So someone.
Would someone be willing then to make that motion? Or can I make it to waive the rule so that we can do reconsideration the next meeting so I can have more information? If that is, if, if we, so I can make a more well-informed decision.
So I'm just clarifying, isn't reconsideration that, that, I mean, all you're doing is voting to reconsider it, so you have all of that time?
Yeah, but I just don't know that I'm, I'm willing to, to do that. I mean, I think that my leaning is to say no. That's my leaning. And to bring it forward in a different way and a different time. Because I, I've just, I've been watching over time the way things don't change. And I'm, I'm happy to see that, that Lysara, you seem like you are doing a great job in communication and willingness to work with people, and that's wonderful. And I appreciate that. But that hasn't been the case with the board, and that hasn't been the case with other people that have worked there. And so I have concerns and you know, I would rather have some time to look into my own ideas about what I would like to see changed over the next six months as well. So yeah, so I would like some time to make that decision. I don't want to make that decision at eleven fifteen at night feeling pressured by everybody to do either way. Does that make sense?
Okay, so it sounds like we don't, we don't have that ability to move forward with the no.
Could we, could we continue this meeting to Thursday? Because like I said, I had trepidations about us finishing this tonight.
Do you want to do that, Kim?
I'm fine with that.
So point of clarification, can we then change the rules at any time per provision 5.6? Any of us can just say, we'd like to change the rules. And then we do that?
I think that's what it means.
Great, love it. So basically, the rule doesn't exist. We could bring it back through a two-step process if we wanted to. But the intent of that rule is that somebody who dissented actually means to bring it back, which includes all three of you. Somebody who dissented wants us to consider the topic again with new information or whatever. That is the intent of that rule. So if we vote to destroy the rules, that's just sort of peculiar, but whatever.
You know, if we want to do that and wait until the next meeting to decide about reconsideration, I'm fine with that, but I'm not going to decide at eleven fifteen at night.
Okay, so I need a motion to do something, I think. Leslie?
Sorry, I'm just, I'm still trying to kind of wrap my mind around this. So could obviously, I can't vote to reconsider, but if someone else could vote to reconsider, could then a, like a conversation happen between City Manager Slattery, Director Allen, and Councilmember Bergel during the period between now and when the reconsidered motion was brought forward again, let's say hypothetically Thursday? Could that be part of kind of what we leave here with is a, a motion for reconsideration? And then you know, with, with the possibility of some conversations happening and then bringing this forward on Thursday? Is that possible?
Are you asking Kim or are you asking staff?
Staff, I think. And then maybe Kim after that. If, you know, just first, if it's possible. And then second, if anyone, if anyone is willing, who has the, the capacity?
What Pam taught us is that in order to there, there are two ways to go. One is somebody who voted against the motion can move to reconsider. If that passes and it needs three votes, then the matter could be continued to a future date, whether it be Thursday. then the matter could be continued to a future date, whether it be Thursday or the next regular meeting. Uh, or another special meeting, but Thursday or a regular meeting. And then it could be revoted at that time with new information in hand regarding how to handle the next six months. So I think there are solu- the other solution is this Rule 5.6, is it? That says you can suspend the rules to allow a motion to reconsider to be made at a future meeting, not later than four weeks, you know, uh, two meetings from now, something like that. Or just at the next meeting or on Thursday. So there are two ways to go. Anybody could make the last motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, so I just want to clarify then for Kim, if she um, wanted to relook at this, I forgot what the word was already, um. If you want to do it on Thursday, you'll have this council. And if you want to do it at the next meeting, it would be the next council. So if we suspend the rules, it would go until the next meeting or we would still have a special meeting? Or that's all up in the air too?
Either way, that would be up in the air, but one way or the other, suspend the rules to permit reconsideration outside of the 24-hour limit that Pam directed us to.
Okay, so those are our two options. Either Kim does it or somebody else votes to um, suspend the rules. So. Does anybody want to make any motions for anything? Did you already try to do this Natalie, to suspend it? You started to, I think. No?
Um, I, I was pointing out that I, I mean, it's really just like against the intent of. I, I hear that the three folks who voted against it are not necessarily interested in bringing it back. So I, I'm a little loath to make that motion without our new council members and hearing their perspectives essentially. I mean, the new council could say, hey, we would like to hear that thing again. Or one of us could say it. Um, I, I just um, I'm unprepared for this scenario. As we probably all are.
At eleven.
We did invest in hiring a mediator and all agreed to do this process of mediation and now find that there is a gap in what we found, what we came up with, that the parties are saying they're willing to try to solve, problem solve around. And I find myself pretty frustrated, but not blaming anyone individually, just frustrated by the situation we're in where we've expended resources and gone down a path in good faith that we are now not sure how to continue. It, it feels like a frustrating thing, given that there were some um, things that I think we all wanted. Namely, some of those agree, some of those elements of the agreement, we wanted those to move forward quickly. So I, I'm, I'm hopeful that one of the folks who made the proposal will actually want to bring it back. Or excuse me, that voted against it would want to bring it back.
Councilmember Allison.
Yeah, so um, like, I guess maybe, maybe I could think about, you know, what Councilmember Brugel issue and my issue with the mediation was, was that, you know, sort of, sort of what, what was decided was a bit out of our control. Like, you know, we, we requested some guidelines and I, I just personally feel like there's not enough teeth um, with the lack of trust uh, to, you know, trust that these things are going to happen or, or you know, the in-between. So um, you know, I'm, I think we should probably all try and sleep on this. I know we're all tired and resume Thursday, but that's just me. I don't, I don't know how else we feel about that. Is there, how can I make that motion?
Fine, but we can't do anything on Thursday until we have a motion.
So I'm, I'll make a motion to what, suspend?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to suspend the thing and uh, make a motion to resume this meeting for Thursday at nineteen thirty.
Thursday is seven.
Yes.
For us, you know.
Normal people.
A lot of people.
So can I ask Councilwoman Allison a question? Is, is your intent to suspend the rule that provides that you can only reconsider a motion at the same meeting or within 24 hours? You want to suspend that?
Yes, and so that we can continue this conversation and reconsider uh, on Thursday. When, when we're all more bright-eyed.
And Pam specifically, what's the number of the limitation?
Um, I'm going in to get it right now if I didn't close it out.
I think it's five point eight.
Six, so maybe it is eight.
There it is. Um, it is Rule Number 5.6. So I am uh, doing the motion is motion to enact Rule Number 5.6 to suspend uh, the rules of meeting conduct and to allow for reconsideration um, at, on December 3rd at uh, seven thirty PM at a meeting to be continued.
Do we have a second on that?
I second of it. Anyone can second, right?
Yeah.
Second. All right, um, do we have any more discussion or can we have a roll call vote on this?
I have one other question.
Okay.
Um, so that, so that's Thursday night potentially when we vote. And I'm wondering if um, if I could meet, if LaSara and Miles might have some time to meet tomorrow evening. I have to work tomorrow in the day, but if, um, but maybe we could figure out a time to brainstorm, even if it's on Zoom. I don't know if you guys would be willing to do that, but I would be interested in that.
You have availability Thursday during the day?
Work until four and then I have a thing at four. You know what, if we're half, well, I'd rather do it sooner than later. I could Zoom on my lunch hour perhaps.
Okay, I can, I can accommodate that. What time?
Uh, tomorrow it would be at one.
I can set up a Zoom.
Okay, would you be in, you'd be there too, right?
Of course, yes.
Of course, okay. So then why don't you, I, I'd be really um, happy to to kind of have some time to talk about this stuff with you two and figure some, some things out. So before Thursday, so yeah, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Um, any other discussion? If not, let's have a, a vote on moving the, on the rules, five points.
All right, Councilmember Castellano.
Hi.
Councilmember Messner.
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Hi.
Councilmember Allison.
Hi.
Councilmember Brugel. Motion carries.
Well, we just don't want to get rid of you guys, Austin and Heidi. We're all on Thursday. Your patience tonight and LaSara, thank you for being willing to um, work with us and show up again on Thursday. And we'll see you guys. I will adjourn the meeting um, now for this. And one question though, do we want, if we're going to have a meeting on Thursday, do we want to try to bring the budget back?
Sure.
Okay, so um, if you can, oh, Lane is here. Are you available, Lane, on Thursday night to do a budget report?
I think he may have left his computer up.
Oh, okay. Anyway, you can, and with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Uh, thank you guys for all of your um, work tonight. This was a struggle, but.
You all look so tired.